Madam Deputy Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilman Frazier.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Councilman Matt McGon.
Present.
And Councilwoman Taylor.
Here.
Sir, we have tomorrow.
Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. First on our agenda, we have two appointments, or one appointment and one reappointment.
Be right there. I believe Jeffrey Ligon is here this evening. He's a reappointment to the...
May I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Come on up. And Lois Jones, please come up. I looked for you, didn't see you. So, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This evening, I want to bring forward a reappointment and a new appointment. First of all, Jeffrey Ligon has served on the Southfield Public Arts Commission with distinction, and it's a mayoral appointment, and I would like to have Mr. Ligon reappointed for another three-year term. And then, the second, this is a new appointment. As you know, our community lost Felix Selden, who served some months back, who served on the Local Officers' Compensation Commission. And I'm asking your approval to appoint Lois Marie Jones to the Local Officers' Compensation Commission. They will be meeting by state statute next month. I've known Ms. Jones for a very, very long time. She was a very active mom in the PTA. She's a member of our SERC team, is out there at all kinds of events, very supportive, involved in her neighborhood. Lois, I've lost how many years in Southfield? Twenty-three years, a very active president. She's also on the Police Advisory Board with our chief, Ellen Barron. So, I think with her broad experience and longevity in the community, I think she would make an excellent candidate for the Local Officers' Compensation Commission. So, Council President, I'm asking for approval on this reappointment and appointment.
Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Jarrett, I move that we reappoint Ms. Ligon as presented, and also we appoint Mrs. Jones as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, for the reappointment to the Southfield Public Arts Commission of Jeffrey Ligon, and the appointment of the Southfield Local Officers' Compensation Commission of Louise Marie Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council. I know you'd like to meet Ms. Jones. If you haven't met her already, I know some of you know her, but...
You have to swear them in first.
Yeah, we'll do this. Oh, yes, thank you. I'm always jumping the gun. Madam Clerk or Deputy Clerk, would you do the oath of office for Ms. Jones? And do you want to come out front so that we have a photographer here? As a reappointment, Mr. Ligon does not need to be sworn in, but I would like you all to have the opportunity to meet him if you haven't. So, you can go up around the back and make the rounds.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Jeff, please. Thank you. We're happy. Thank you. 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 Congratulations. That's why I get this. Congratulations. What's your...
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, it's actually a place... Okay. Understood. Good. Thank you. 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 Got it. Thank you. And members of your family are here. Do you have one individual who's already...
I go with the kids. She's here, and I'm aware of her. So... Grandmother. They're ready to move. Two. Okay. No further. Okay. Got it. Thank you. And members of your family are here. Do you have one individual who's already... I go with the kids. She's here, and I'm aware of her. So... Grandmother. They're ready to move. Two. Okay. No further. All right. Next, we have Communications.
The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. The first speaker is Sharon Carson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to address the concern of the communities for what has been going on. I've been a resident for 20 years, and we have participated in a national garage day sale, and it, what it does is generates community. It generates conversation starters with the new people moving in, because when they bring their things out, when we go to see what they have, and they come see what, you know, the community has, it's like a conversation starter. It's like an icebreaker for people who have not been coming out, especially since COVID. So, I was here last year also, and I came in July, which is a little late, for this to be advertised, like it had been previously in the Southfield Sun, and from the mailers from the previous, the Southfield provided, on the website also. I understand that Ms. Carr has now retired. She was very instrumental in putting this event together for Southfield. So, I'm here representing the community. I live in Washington Heights, and we also partner with other subdivisions. So, on behalf of the community, I would like to make sure or see if we could add this event on the calendar again this year, and do we have to come back every year? Because it is a national event, it's always the second week in August. Yes, second week in August.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Estelle Floyd.
Good evening. My name is Estelle Floyd, and my husband and I have been residents in the Southfield area for just about 20 years, and we're very upset with the roads in our neighborhood, how damaged that they are. And I've been, I attended the last meeting last week for the city council, not the city council meeting, I attended the Sherwood Village Community Association meeting last week, thank you, last week. And I want to address the issue with the roads being damaged. I've been in constant contact with our block club captain, and she's been in constant contact with one of the councilmen, as well as the mayor. And she, the council, our block club leader, has said that in 2021, Mayor Shiver surveyed Adrian Road, Fillmore Place, Go-Goan, and Alta Vista, and he indicated that these streets were in need of repair. These streets were scheduled for repair this year, 2023. And she, our block club leader, says she has gotten a message from the mayor's secretary on Friday, May the 5th, and the phone call was from the engineering department, and stated that only the streets east of Lath- Lathr Village would be included in the road repair, thus leaving out all the streets that I had previously named that are in worse disrepair. And these streets were slated, as I'm told, to be repaired on 2023, but now it's been postponed to 2024. So, my question is, I'd like to know what changed the dates since the streets west of Lathr Village are in greater repair?
I can, when your neighborhood president called me, I did not get the latest update. I believe Mr. Manalbaum, our council president, has better information than I had. I had talked to the city engineer earlier, and she told me it was postponed for a year.
I apologize.
And I think you know, Council President, you have better information than I do.
The neighborhood that you're speaking of, in Section 24 of the city, the engineering work has not been completed for the streets that are west of Lathrup, between Lathrup and Southfield Road. The streets east of Lathrup to Woodvilla have been engineered and designed. Because those streets have already been engineered and designed, the city council, it will be coming to the city council, hopefully June 12th, to vote to do the water main replacement and the street repair on those streets. The city could not, unfortunately, get the engineering work done before this construction season for those streets. That engineering work will be completed during the winter, so next year, those streets can have their water replacement and reconstruction completed.
So, are you saying that it's not based on the dire need of the streets?
I will agree that the streets west of Lathrup are probably in worse condition, but they were not engineered, and the engineering takes several months, and it would not be done in time for this construction season, unfortunately.
So, are you saying that the money that was already slated for those streets that I mentioned has gone elsewhere to repair other streets?
No. It's the project, the project that is being done this year just has a lower budget, and the money will be used next year for those streets.
And I think it's so unfair that the streets are in dire need. I mean, we're tearing up our tires, and all of the, it's been patchwork, and the gravel is projected onto our cars, making dents in our tires, and it's just a mess. And the other streets are beautifully done, just east of Lathr Village, and they, a lot of the streets have been repaired, that were not in nearly as bad a shape as our streets.
Yeah, and as someone who drives on those streets frequently, I agree that those streets do need to be repaired. But as I mentioned, I spoke with the city engineer, they will be doing the engineering work this winter for next year's construction season.
So, it appears that there's probably bad planning on someone's part to plan to have the streets done and have it not be done.
I can't speak to all the details, but I do know that the engineering work has not been completed, and it wasn't going to be completed by this construction season.
Well, either it's bad communication for us to be told that they would be done in 2023, and here we're put off another year or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reverend Tommy Floyd.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have an issue that, like my wife just said, we've been in the neighborhood for 20 years. We had two neighbors on both sides of us. Unfortunately, both families have passed, and the other neighbors moved in. Today, I felt really bad, because I was going to write a note to the neighbor and mention to him about the items that the children leave on their, on their yard. Now, when I drive down my street, and I drove down through the neighborhood, every one of the houses looked beautiful. But when I come down my street and I see these toys, baby carts, even shovels and all that, I say, what happened to my neighborhood? That neighborhood that I loved so much, I really didn't love it that much, but I loved it enough to stay there. Now, in the past, I had vehicles out there, and I got a ticket for them, because they, a couple of them didn't have a license, but I brought those vehicles from another place. They told me I had to move them, so I did. But now I look at the neighborhood and the debris where people might look at other neighbors' houses and look at the beautiful homes that they have, but the neighbors with the beautiful home got to look at their home, which is unkept. So, and so the writing that letter, I'm frustrated already, so it's no problem to that, because the neighbors that were there before they moved in kept it real nice. We cared for each other, we were neighbors, we spoke, and I speak to those ones, these ones I have next to me now. But the fact that they can't move their, whatever items that they have, and put it on the yard, and when I look out my yard and see their yard, it made me frustrated. So, I'm asking the council, be whoever it is, if I had to pay the penalty of moving my vehicles to make someone else look at the neighborhood and say, I'm happy that everybody is in accordance, why can't someone here make that an issue, that whoever it is, kids, seniors, sick, you have to move your vehicles off the yard and put it either at your front door, or if it's that, you know, messed up or whatever, put it in the back? Now, this has constantly happened, and from the day they moved in. Now, I mentioned to you, Council President, about the marijuana issue. Now, I know you can smoke marijuana, since it's been passed, but when it affects my wife and my home, and my neighbors, and not my neighbors, but my friends, when they come in, that that filtration of the smoke come in my home, and I'm being affected, which I don't smoke, they can smoke whatever they want. But where does it stop when someone else, either a neighbor or a person, affects someone else, and they can't do nothing about it? And this is what I'm here today for. I need to be, I need to have something done.
Thank you. Your time is up. I'm going to ask our police chief, I'm going to put him on the spot to address the marijuana smell. Because I know it is something that we've had a lot of complaints about, because it is something that is legal, but if you can address his concerns about the smells coming into his home...
Can you go back to my seat, or...
You can go back to...
Well, I'll do two things for both his complaints. The first complaint is really a code enforcement issue, so I'll get his information and pass that on to Director Beeks, who can send in a code enforcement officer and address those neighborhood concerns. Secondly, unfortunately, marijuana is legal. Also, people are allowed to smoke it in their homes and whatnot, so we do know that this happens, where sometimes they may have that smell go over, but it's really nothing that the city or the police department can do in that regard, because it's been legalized, as long as they're obeyed by the laws governing marijuana use, it's really out of our hands.
And so, his complaint that the smells are coming into his house?
Yeah.
And...
It's unfortunate, but there's no laws that would have us to be able to regulate smells going from one location to the other, just not. So, maybe something, have those conversations with your neighbors, ask them to be more considerate, or maybe go to another area of the home and see if they would oblige by that, but as far as law enforcement intervention, it's really nothing. But I'll get with the Reverend and give him the contact information for Director Beeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
We control a lot of things, but we don't control the wind.
All right, next is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Council. Good evening to the mayor, to our Assistant City Administrator, our city attorney, and also our deputy clerk. The first thing I wanted to say is I wanted to give the mayor a shout out and a compliment for the event that we attended on Saturday, which was a fundraiser for the Friends of the Southfield Public Arts at the new Edge River Barn that's right there on 12 Mile. If you have not had a chance to go in there to see how it was redone, it would be worth your time and effort to see it. All the things that was saved and restored, but the manner in which they, from an engineering standpoint, secured this historical place, it was just absolutely amazing. And I love art. I just thought it was a great event. Now, I want to give a shout out to my police chief and his department, and I'm so glad that he's here. We've had a couple of instances where our Southfield Police had to do their job, and they did their job, and it makes a difference in this city when we have police officers that take an oath to protect and serve, and they do just that, taking that oath to protect and serve very serious. And the one incident, it was resolved in three hours. That's how good our police department is, and if you want to clap for that, it's okay. Three hours. The other incident, and I love the transparency from my police chief and myself, Rosemary Lois, my husband, and Ms. Lyons in the back, we are on the Police Chief Advisory Board, and we're very active. We care about our chief and our police department, but another instant, another instance, we saw from the press conference that a guy violated one of our police officers. Now, I'm sure in other municipalities, that could have turned into something that would not have been a good situation, but if you watch it, and you watch it over and over again, despite him assaulting our female police officer, the level of professionalism that our officers displayed in terms of handling this particular matter, and what this guy did, he beat his mother and put her in the hospital, and we were still, our cops, professional about this matter. So, I want to give a shout out to our police department and our chief for how they handled it. And to hear my mayor say, and my city administrator say, that our police officers at the memorial event was given their just due cost of living speaks to how we support our officers, our chief, our mayor, our city administrator, and everybody else that works as a team in the city of Southfield. The citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, but we work as a team. So, thank you very much, and thank you, chief.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment, and to our first speaker, Ms. Carson, we will talk with our city administrator about having some, to see the possibilities of a citywide garage sale. Next, we have several presentations. The first presentation is a plaque in recognition of Assistant City Planner Jeffrey Spence. Come on up.
So, Council, this week ends the career in Southfield. I'm sure he'll do many other things of our Assistant Planner Jeffrey Spence. And all of you know him well. He lives here many nights for 32 years, between planning commissions and city council meetings. So, I, we want to acknowledge Jeff for his years of service and the time he's put in. There, I can't count the number of projects that he's touched in the course of, the span of his career, but I do want to do a little bio, so this is like, this is your life, Jeffrey Spence. We won't go too far back, but anyhow, Mr. Spence received a bachelor degree in landscape architecture from Michigan State University. On April 22nd, 1991, he worked as a temporary planning landscape intern for the city of Southfield. On September, or October 28th, he was hired by the city as a contract employee for the position of Landscape Design Coordinator. September 21st, 92, he started full-time as Landscape Design Coordinator. In February 2nd, 1998, he was promoted to Environmental Planner. On March 4th, 2004, he passed the exam for the State of Michigan Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Certification. He's been active in organizing, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the line. On October 1st, 2006, his position was reclassified from Environmental Planner to Assistant City Planner. He's been active in organizing and participating in the Friends of the Rouge Cleanup since 1991. He's instrumental in issuing tree permits and enforcing the Woodlands and Wetlands Regulations, and FOIA Coordinator for the Planning Department, and during his tenure, he has prepared for and attended hundreds of planning commission and city council meetings and other boards and commissions meetings. So, on May 22nd, we want to honor Jeff. In his last week, he retires this... Uh, in his last week, he retires this Friday, um, with, um, a plaque of appreciation, and uh, it reads, "In appreciation, Jeffrey L. Spence, for thirty-two years of service to the city of Southfield as a member of the Planning Department. Landscape Design Coordinator, Environmental Coordinator, Assistant City Planner, nineteen ninety-one to twenty-twenty-three. With gratitude, uh, from Mayor Kenson Seibert, the Southfield City Council, and Southfield City Planner Terry Crowe." Jeff? We expect you to say something.
Yes. Thank you. Um, thank you to Mayor Seibert, um, thank you to Council, thank you Administration, um, for giving me the opportunity thirty years ago to serve not only you, uh, but the residents and the businesses of the city. And we've seen a lot of change over all that time, um, but I have to say that it is not just an individual effort, this is a team effort, and all of us working together for one common goal, uh, which was not only to make Southfield, but to keep Southfield the center of it all. And again, I thank you for that opportunity. Just a quote that I read earlier, it says, "You have to put off being young until you can retire." And, um, I think for me, there's some truth in that, um, but I also know that there are many happy adventures ahead. Uh, Mayor, you kind of, uh, noted that. Um, and, uh, for me, not only for me, but also for my wife Roxanne, uh, that will keep us young, uh, that includes our two granddaughters who live in Virginia, I'm pretty sure that they will keep us young. Um, so this Friday, uh, as I noted, uh, as the mayor noted, I will be retiring, uh, from a city I love and people that I love. Um, and I am looking forward to walking in the door on Friday night and looking at my wife and saying, "Hi, honey, I'm home." Forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, I know everybody would like to share your name, you have to make sure.
I will take this.
And Roxanne?
Thank you for your service. Your life has been wonderful.
I know she has, she's been very.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing her. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Enjoy your day. Thank you.
All right. Stephen Huntington. I'd like to, um, I guess he said, "If Jeff is gone, I'm gone." So, um, first of all, before, um, we get to Mr. Huntington, uh, and his distinguished service, uh, I do want to say that, uh, one o'clock on Friday, if you're free to stop by, uh, we have a, uh, little cake and coffee retirement, um, farewell for Jeff. So, um, as Mr. Spence said, uh, it's a team effort, and there's a Planning Department, but also very important function in the city is the Southfield Planning Commission, a seven-member body. And the gentleman standing next to me, I've had the pleasure of knowing for years, um, in his, and I've, I always read the minutes of the Planning Commission, and for a number of years, um, Mr. Huntington was the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I always find that those minutes very instructive, because many times the question I would ask has been asked as the Planning Commission vets the various projects and text amendments and everything else that, that goes through this body. So, um, as you know, Mr. Huntington asked to be, uh, reprieve from his duties after fifteen years on, on the Planning Commission. And we, we truly appreciated all those evenings that you spent here, um, several meetings a month. So, uh, we want, on behalf of the city, uh, I have the pleasure of presenting this plaque to you, uh, and it is, um, in appreciation to Stephen Huntington for fifteen years of service to the Southfield, uh, to the city of Southfield as a member of the Planning Commission, two thousand and eight. I'm not done. Um, Planning Commission from two thousand and eight to twenty-three, so with gratitude, uh, Mayor Seibert, Southfield City Council, and Southfield City Planner Terry Crowe. Stephen?
Good evening. Uh, first I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor Seibert here for honoring me this evening. Uh, it's been a great fifteen years. I never planned on being here this long, but time flies. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the other commissioners that worked with me and worked together with me, and we made things happen to help make this city a great city. Uh, I want to thank each and every city council person up there, I know it's, for your dedication, your commitment to the city, uh, I know it's not an easy job, and sometime we have the best plans in the world, we think, and the best projects in the world, we think, and uh, sudden you hear that somebody hates it, and they let you know they hate it. So you guys do a great job in, in moving the city forward, and I think we have a lot to look forward to. The city of Southfield is definitely moving in the right direction, and I'm proud to be a citizen of the city of Southfield, so keep up the good work, and I'm gone from the commission, but I'll still be around. Thank you.
And we're very proud to have, um, so you have some folks with you, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, my family, who's always gave me support. My wife Sandy, my brother Eldridge and his wife Natalie.
Thank you.
My mother's supposed to be there, but she couldn't get her hair together, so.
Well, to you, Mrs. Huntington, we appreciate you sharing your husband on those nights when he's here rather than home.
Thank you.
So, uh, you have to make the rounds.
All right.
Thank you for your service. Always come back, you know. Thank you for the, thank you.
Congratulations to Joyce. Good to have all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, yes, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
in our community.
Um, is Michael Cooper in the house, uh, or anyone from the Holocaust Remembrance, or, um, the Community Relations Council, the Jewish, no? Well, uh, they were invited. Uh, I would like to ask our DEI Coordinator, Kimberly Gacha, to come forward. Uh, as Council is well aware, um, we continue in the metro area to see ugly incidents of antisemitism, uh, and, uh, this community, uh, stands for, um, uh, understanding and diversity and appreciation of all peoples, and so, uh, I was approached about a month ago, um, to, um, for the city to take a stand, uh, on confronting and combating antisemitism in our community. And I asked, uh, Ms. Gacha to be here, uh, this evening because, um, I worked with her in the reviewing of this, this ordinance, and it's, um, or this resolution, rather, and it's, uh, it's a very good guideline, uh, not only as a stand that our community is taking, but also internally as, um, we work for diversity, inclusion, and equity. So, uh, this is a joint resolution this evening, and whereas antisemitism, including harassment on the basis of actual or perceived, uh, Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identity, affiliation, or faith, remains a persistent, pervasive, and disturbing problem in American society, and whereas Jews continue to be targeted, a targeted minority in the United States and are consistently and most likely, of all religious groups, to be victimized by incidents of hate, um, and such incidents are increasing at an alarming rate, uh, and whereas elected officials and institutions have a responsibility to protect all citizens from acts of hate and bigotry, including antisemitism, and we must be given the tools to do so, and therefore, uh, or rather, whereas valid monitoring, informed analysis, investigation, and effective policymaking all benefit of the, from accurate and uniform definitions. So whereas an international Holocaust Remembrance Alliance adopted a working definition of antisemitism in May of two thousand and sixteen, which has become the internationally recognized and authoritative definition for use by governments and international organizations, that definition reads, "Antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property and toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities." And whereas contemporary examples of antisemitism in public light, the media, schools, and the workplace, and in religious sphere, could, taking into account the overall context included, but are not limited to, calling for aiding or justifying the killing of or harming of Jews in the name of radical ideology or an extremist view of religion, making mendacious, dehumanizing, uh, demoralizing, or stereotypical allegations about Jews such as, or, uh, the power of Jews' collectives, such as especially, but not exclusively, the myth about world Jewish conspiracy, or Jews controlling the media, uh, the economy, government, and other societal institutions, accusing Jews of, as a people, of being responsible for, um, for real or imagined wrongdoing committed by a single, um, person, uh, Jewish, uh, person or group, or even acts committed by, uh, non-Jews, according to the Jewish citizens, uh, accusing Jewish citizens of being more loyal to Israel or the alleged priorities of Jews worldwide than to the interests of their own nations, and using the symbols and images associated with classic antisemitism, um, i.e. claims of Jews killing, um, Jesus or blood libel to characterize Israel or Israelis, drawing comparisons of contemporary Israeli policy, uh, to that of the Nazis, holding Jews collectively responsible for the actions of the state of Israel. And whereas criminal acts are antisemitic when, uh, when the targets or attacks, um, whether they be people or property, such as buildings, schools, places of worship, and cemeteries, are selected because they are or perceived to be Jewish or linked to Jews. Whereas antisemitic discrimination is the denial of Jews' opportunities or service available to others, and is illegal in many countries. And whereas in the United States, the working definition is utilized by various governments and law enforcement agencies in monitoring, training, education, and including the U.S. Department of State and the U.S. Department of Education, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, the city of Southfield County, of Oakland, state of Michigan, adopts the legally binding international, uh, definition of antisemitism and examples of the same, and be it resolved that the mayor and council, the city of Southfield, um, are, ensure that the working definition of antisemitism, including the contemporary examples, will be available as an educational resource for the Southfield Police Department, the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and city departments addressing antisemitism and other forms of discrimination. I'm looking for, um, an adoption this evening, Council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of a joint resolution confronting and combating antisemitism in our community. Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the joint resolution confronting and combating antisemitism in our community. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, um, it is my belief that in response to hate or bias, the first thing that we should be doing is to act, and that's exactly what we're doing here today by moving this charter through, so thank you to our Honorable Mayor, our City Administrator, and the Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure that this, uh, resolution is, um, uh, sent to the various organizations. I'm surprised they're not here this evening. Um, then we have another resolution, so, um, would you like to introduce it, sir?
Yes. The presentation of a joint resolution for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Do we have some representatives here?
We do. They're wearing orange. This is a, um, uh, as you know, this has been a very rough year for gun violence, and, um, on May fifteenth of this year, and there are more in the last, uh, seven days, on, as of May fifteenth, there were two hundred and twenty-four, uh, mass shootings in the United States since January first. This is atrocious, um, and I'm glad that we have citizens in this city that, uh, are standing up and making their voices heard, that this is not acceptable, and to get other, others involved, uh, in this. So, uh, with me is Brenda Threed, uh, who, I, you're the Chair.
Susan.
Oh, Susan, the Gazian, uh, is the Chair. I forgot who's, forgive me. And then we have, um, Millie Hall, uh, with us as well. So I'd like to, uh, read this for the record, um, and as you, Council will remember, uh, we have passed a Wear Orange Day Resolution, uh, in the past, but, um, uh, this, uh, this year, um, because of all of the things that have happened, it almost seems like it's vogue to have a mass shooting or something, I mean, it's, it's just absurd, but, um, um, we have a proclamation before you, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Wear Orange Day, uh, in the city of Southfield, declaring June second. in the city of Southfield, declaring June 2nd as that day, as we've done in the past. Whereas, every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Michigan has had 1,382 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Michigan has the 25th highest rate of gun deaths in all of the United States. And whereas cities across the nation, including Southfield, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the highest responsibility of elected officials. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides, non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence and hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, in January 2013, Hidayah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15 on June 2nd. So on June 22nd, 2023, we recognize what has become, what would have become, her 26th birthday. People across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to, one, to Hidayah Pendleton, and other victims of gun violence, and two, loved ones of those victims. And I'm going to stop there and just say that gun violence is more harmful than just the victim of this. It affects the entire family. It affects neighborhoods. And so, whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to all, we can keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our families and communities safe. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council, city of Southfield County, of Oakland, state of Michigan, declare June 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Wear Orange Day, in the city of Southfield, to honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and to honor and value human lives. Council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the presentation of the joint resolution declaring June 2nd, 2023, as the National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the joint resolution for June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day as presented. Any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Fraser?
I would like to add an amendment to the motion, that a copy be sent to our representatives and senators in Lansing, that we've taken this action.
I'd be happy to make that happen.
Do I need to add that? I'll add that to our, to my motion.
It's a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment to the motion that I previously gave, to have copies sent to all of our representatives.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the joint resolution for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and copies will be sent to our representatives in Lansing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
With me is Susan.
I want to thank the council and the mayor for once again recognizing the importance of this, of this resolution, or proclamation. We've been doing this in the city of Southfield for somewhere more than five years, five or seven years. It's never been a question or a concern that the council would accept this. I thank you for that trust in us. As the mayor said, the issue is getting worse, daily is getting worse in our country. So we ask not only that people wear orange on June 2nd, but they look around their communities for ways that they can be active in the fight against gun violence, because it is a fight. Everyone who is a gun owner, we hope, believes that they should be safe and careful with their guns. But obviously, there are some people who aren't. And we've passed some laws in the state of Michigan that should help this, but there's still a long way to go. So I have my Wear Orange sign. I'd encourage you, if you're interested in the subject, to go to wearorange.org and find out about events that are happening at the beginning of June. And also later in June, there will be a Day of Peace here on Southfield, which actually coincides with the Juneteenth celebration. But any opportunity to bring our citizens together, to work together for safety and peace, it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, and thank you for the reference, that St. David's Church and Episcopal Church on 12 Mile has been very active in anti-gun violence. And they are doing a walk on June 17th. The time, thank you, is noon, I'm sorry, 1:00.
Noon is the rally.
Noon is the rally, and then 1:00 P.M., they'll be walking on, the sidewalk on 12 Mile, in coordination with our police chief, who's met with the church. We, I'm sure we're also doing the gun lock safety, all the things that, we've been doing our part with distributing gun locks and the various gun talks that we've had. I also want to tell you an anecdote, and I felt that, I thought this was really, really sad. I had the occasion to visit New Zealand and Australia several years ago. And everywhere I went, when they realized I was an American, the question they asked is, "Do you own a gun?" And I thought, how sad. That's what, that's the perception. Do you own a gun? No, I don't own a gun. But that is the perception, and it's gotten worse. So, we thank you for your continued efforts, and acknowledge St. David's Church as well.
All right, Council, we have five sets of minutes, but I would like to ask that the minutes of April 24th and the minutes of May 8th be polled for another time. Did anyone have any questions on any of the minutes that we have listed here? All right, so the other three sets of minutes, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the acceptance of our regular meeting minutes of May 1st, 2023, our committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 10th, 2023, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 11th, 2023.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 1st, the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 10th, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 11th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have public hearings and site plans. And the first is a special use request of ZA Design Build for a standalone Savvy Sliders Restaurant.
Good evening. This is a former bank building on the north side of West 12 Mile Road between Franklin Road and Northwestern Highway. Existing zoning is B3 general business. Special use request that is being considered tonight is to allow for a standalone restaurant with drive-through. And in addition to that, site plan review request for the conversion of the existing bank to Savvy Sliders Restaurant with drive-through. This is the aerial of existing conditions. Street view from 12th Mile, looking north. These are guardrails along the west property line. These are important because the special land use requirement for drive-throughs with, in restaurants, are wall screening. And we're going to talk about a recommendation to go with fencing and landscaping in lieu of a wall, given the tight proximity of the property line to the adjacent property. Current zoning is B3. Future land use designates this area for regional mixed use. This is a site plan, removing the existing canopy for the bank and installing a new one, widening the drive-around to provide an escape lane, and adding extensive landscaping. Landscape plan, building elevations, and then here are the renderings following the similar design standards of Savvy Sliders. Existing, our proposed floor plan from the interior. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner make a few comments before we open the public comment, public hearing.
Good evening.
My name is Randy Hanna. I am representing ZA Design Build, located at 31313 Northwestern Highway, Suite 104, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334. We are proposing a Savvy Sliders, as Terry, Mr. Crowe said. We plan on revitalizing that site to make it look more of the Savvy's look, the more modern look. We plan on revitalizing it with a brand-new landscape plan, adding some newer features, a pedestrian crosswalk, a bike rack, removing the canopy, as Mr. Crowe said, and basically bringing life into that area. It's been vacant for quite some time. As you know, it was a former Huntington Bank. I drive by that area on a daily basis, and our goal is to bring more, more opportunities within the community, and different variety of good gourmet food. But that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time, honorable members of the city council.
If I could add, under the special land use, I just want to review the proposed hours of operation, which would be limited to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to midnight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Kerman. I'm here from Savvy Sliders Business Office. Our hours of operation should actually be 7 to 11, Monday through Thursday, 7 to 12, Friday and Saturday, and 11 to 10.
On Sunday. If you could just repeat the Sunday hours?
Sunday, 11 to 10.
11 a.m. to 10 p.m. Okay. So this, we have the public hearing on the special land use first, and then afterwards we can get into site plan discussions after the public hearing.
Absolutely. All right, so you can have a seat. And this is a public hearing for PSLU 23-0002 for ZA Design Build on behalf of Pata development to allow for a standalone Savvy Sliders located at 26336 West Telegraph Road. Anyone who wants to comment will have three minutes. Please come up and give your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, coming up, the public hearing is now closed. Council? Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes, I just had a very simple question. One was just, is this a sit-down place as well, or is it just drive-through?
We will, we will have indoor seating as well.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. Any outdoor, or no?
Not at this time. I don't believe there's much room on the site for it.
Okay, I know you're cutting it tight, so.
Yeah, great to have a nice patio out in front, but.
All right. And you say you open at 7:00 a.m., so you're serving breakfast?
Yeah, we want to keep the opportunity of serving breakfast. At this time, there aren't any, we're not looking to serve breakfast, but we don't want to have to come back in front of the board if we, if we have to extend those hours.
Okay, because I was, I was, I'd never seen one that had breakfast yet, so.
We typically limit the breakfast now to our 24-hour locations. We don't see this one being one, but we want to reserve the right. If we can serve breakfast, we'd like to. We still serve all-day breakfast.
All right, understood. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
You need to come more often.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of PSLU 23-0002 special use request on behalf of the owner, Pata Development, to allow for a standalone Savvy Sliders Restaurant with the drive-through on the property at 26336 West 12 Mile Road, as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve PSLU 23-0002 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And through the chair, we'll, we'll update the hours of operation as presented.
Yes.
Our next item of business is considering the site plan. So with this, and you've considered waiving the wall requirement in lieu of landscaping and fencing, and we've worked with the designer to come up with an alternative plan. On two of the three sides, there's just not enough room to adequately put the screening in it. It doesn't seem to serve any purpose. So we'd like to make a conditional approval, subject to finalizing the details of fencing and landscaping in lieu of the wall. That would be, you know, one of the conditions of the site plan approval.
Counsel, any other questions about the site plan? Councilman Fraser?
Yeah. Have the businesses on either side been contacted to make sure that, that they're okay with that?
Yes, Councilwoman Fraser. I have been in contact with the property to the north. There is a recorded easement agreement between both property owners. And I'm, I also with me, I have a rough draft of the parking agreement from the property owner to the north.
Okay, so as long as you're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
My question was answered. Thank you.
All right. The question I have is, this is to the city planner. Did the bank not require the masonry wall?
Yeah, for some reason, the masonry wall was one of those older requirements. I think when fast-food restaurants were coming in and drive-through with the loud squacker box, for lack of a better term, they required wall screening to reduce the noise. And you just don't typically get that with the bank teller. So we only require that in our ordinance for drive-through restaurants. And that's something that we may amend in the future, but it's just one of those obscure requirements that are still on the books. And in this particular case, it doesn't make sense. Now, if it was adjacent to residential, similar to the culvers, we did enforce the wall being installed.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other, any further questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the site plan review request PSP 23-. I move that we approve the site plan review request PSP 23-0004 from ZA Design Build on behalf of the owners to allow for the conversion of an existing bank building to the standalone Savvy Sliders Restaurant at the listed location with the conditions presented to us.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve PSP 23-0004. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you, Reverend.
Through the chair, our, our next item is a site plan approval consideration request from Habitat for Humanity on the south side of Westland between Evergreen and Prescott. Existing zoning is RT attached, single-family. The site plan review request is for the construction of three residential duplexes for a total of six new units. Existing site is wooded. There was, at one time, former single-family homes. You could see that the driveway approach was still in place from a former residential unit. Across the street, they built the first of their duplexes, and this was the property that, the subject property was rezoned for attached residential at the time, anticipating more duplexes. They have made some minor modifications to the design. They put the garages on the outside and made them a little larger. Existing zoning is RT. Future land use supports this. Site plan, we, we took a lot of care to have the duplexes line up with the existing residence as far as setbacks and scale of property, so they fit in better. Each of the units will have some foundation planting and at least one tree, including sidewalks will be installed. As much of the wooded rear yards will be kept and preserved, and then a small area in the back for sod area or seeded area for lawn for, for playing and hanging out, as well as an accessory storage structure in the back to provide some additional storage for these units. Floor plan, they do share a party wall. These are elevations that have been revised from the property that was designed across the street, taking into consideration the separation of the garages. With that, I'd like to invite the petitioner to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the project.
Good evening. My name is Scott Milliken on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, 150 Osmond, Pontiac, Michigan. As Terry stated, we're looking to construct three duplexes. We've previously removed a blighted property or blighted structure from this property, and these duplexes are really rounding out our revitalization efforts in this neighborhood, where we've done, in this particular neighborhood, a great deal of renovation to the tune of over 50 units. And I won't put any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Just from an architectural standpoint, what is the appeal of a duplex?
I think that's kind of a subjective question. I'm not sure how to answer that.
If I could, through the chair, maybe, Scott, if you can talk about that, really, these are to provide homeownership opportunities for people that wouldn't necessarily be able to, and you're always looking at cost savings and reducing utility costs, and by having a shared duplex, it does reduce the cost of, of construction, to keep it more affordable. Could you talk a little bit about the program and who you're targeting it for?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's exactly correct. Single-family housing, the cost of construction has gone quite high. We've previously developed single-family housing in the neighborhood, and even with the duplexes moving to two units underneath one roof, we still will be taking a substantial loss on every building that we construct on this parcel. Right now, we just got some adjusted numbers. We're looking at around $40,000 a building. That will be the difference between cost of construction and the market, fair market value, sales price of each building. So we're looking at losing about $120,000 on this project. But again, that's a smaller gap than you would have in single-family housing. If you were to construct single-family houses, you would yield three units on this parcel, and the gap would be much larger as well.
The other thing to note is this is going to be condominiumized, so that each unit will be owned by the occupant, and then they'll share the costs of maintenance and responsibility for the common areas outside of the footprint of the home.
So there'll be, the, when the owner moves in, there'll be a signed agreement that they will have to share some common area?
That's correct. There'll be bylaws in place for the condominium development in an association that is formed.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask another question. I haven't visited this area, but what is the makeup of the homes that are surrounding this area? Let's say within this general area, what type of houses?
They're, they're smaller-scale, single-family units. They're small square footages, and these units fit in with the scale of the existing land use pattern, but they're predominantly single-family. These happen to be single-family that are attached to each other. I grew up most of my life back east in a two-family. Ours just happened to be stacked. In some cases, one person would own the house, and your mother, mother-in-law might live upstairs, your cousins might live. It was a shared structure, but we all had separate entrances and separate apartments. This just happens to be a side-by-side where each occupant owns their portion of the property.
Can you go back to the picture of what's currently built? That may help as well.
Why are you doing that? If I could just insert, many of the homes in the neighborhood are 900 to 1,000 square feet, not all, but they're, they're smaller, I would say, working-class neighborhood. And, you know, the reason, the appeal for this is affordable housing, which we need in the city.
Right, well, I'm, I'm just trying to get a, I think for the last month or so, when we bring up housing, I'm just trying to get a feel for the character of the various neighborhoods, and I think the mayor has indicated that this would not distract from the character of this given neighborhood. So is that correct?
Correct. Mm-hmm. I, I see it as an upgrade, because you'd have vacant parcels or dilapidated homes. This is infill housing. It's going to raise the overall value and appeal of the street.
Okay, well, I, that's a, that's a reason for the question. I'm trying to get at, okay, all right, well, thank you, sir.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I'm just trying, looking by the picture, see, is the driveway enough for two families? It looks like it's just one driveway in, in the middle.
Yes, as Terry had mentioned, we've changed that design for the, the next duplex. I don't know if you want to click over, but the, the driveways are separated now on the, on the new. You'll see each individual garage will have its own driveway on that drawing that's now on the screen.
Okay. And is there a garage, or just the storage in the back? And is there a basement?
The garages are up front, and then they have additional accessory storage unit in the rear.
No basements?
No basement. These are slab-on-grade design due to the ground, the soil conditions that we have to deal with.
And the dividing point between the two homes, what divides them? Like what kind of wall is in there or whatnot? I mean, is it cement walls or something?
It is a framed wall with 5/8 drywall. We've, it's a, it's commonly referred to as a advising wall or a party wall, which is built to building code to minimize sound transfer between units.
Yeah, that's why I was just worried about the sound.
And ours, and just as a reminder, we, we build tremendously above code, meaning that there'll be higher values of insulation in all of our walls and our ceilings as well, because we go for sustainability of the units. Our average energy rating is 60% more efficient than building code, which then also translates into a sound increase and sound reduction between units as well.
All right, great. Well, I think it's a great idea. So I just had those couple of questions. Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, these are 1,000 square feet?
Yes.
Three bedrooms and a bathroom. Does it have a living room, or? And it's got a kitchen. Seems like the bedrooms would be pretty small. 1,000 feet is not very much if you're gonna have three bedrooms. I mean, it's better than sleeping under a tree.
Yeah, I'll say it's better than that. It's better than the, than the bedroom I grew up in, that's for sure, but I had a three-bedroom, 900-square-foot house.
Pardon me?
I grew up in a 900-square-foot, three-bedroom, so these are a little bit larger than that. But yes, they are definitely more efficient of a, of a, of a floor plan than your, you know, larger homes that are being built in other areas of the state.
Is there like a great room for the kitchen and living room?
Yeah, that's correct. And we do, what we do is we do furniture layouts, when we do the design as well, so we make sure that we put in where the pieces are going to go into our software back at the office, and they do turning radiuses for visitability, so we build ADA visitability so that we've got larger doorways, three-foot doorways, larger hallways, one zero entrance, zero clearance entrance in the building as well. So there's definitely room to move around inside that building.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, through the chair, Scott, can you also talk about your homeownership program that each of the buyers have to go through and volunteer time and?
Yeah, certainly. So our homeowners go through educational components of our program, both with financial education. We have HUD certified counselors on our staff, and each home buyer is certified and coached through a financial program that they complete. Additionally, one thing that I find really unique as to us as an affordable housing agency is our maintenance program, maintenance of the home and landscaping of the home. I think I mentioned before, all classes that I wish I had before I became a homeowner, so that you can be a good neighbor to others and, and make sure that you're keeping the value of your home up. They also do participate in sweat equity, which is what he had mentioned, Terry had mentioned, is, is basically, they volunteer 300 hours, either on, on their home or on another home, or if not physically able in some capacity with a nonprofit in the community of Oakland County. So they definitely are, it's a partnership, and they are purchasing the home at the fair market value as well. Again, we do bring down payment assistance channels that is through like MISTDA or private party in order to make it affordable for them.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
All right. You just brought up the fact that individuals will be purchasing these homes. What type of mortgage are they, are you, is a 30-year mortgage, or what?
Yes, typically it's a 30-year mortgage, just like you or I would, would have, albeit though they do have access to a zero-profit mortgage, so they're not paying the higher interest rates that we would be paying. They pay, I mean, a couple ticks below that, so right now, I think that's somewhere around four, three and a half, four. But these are specialized products that are created by the banking industry due to the Community Revitalization Act that is in place, that they provide these products to affordable buyers, and that's.
So what is this, I mean, that's why I was getting at, make sure we aren't, these individuals wouldn't be subject to today's mortgage interest rate. Now, what, what are you calling this reduced rate? What is that being called?
It's just called a 30-year mortgage, but it's a specialized product that's offered through specific lenders that partner with Habitat for Humanity to provide the product. They get community revitalization credits through the government for, for providing this product.
Okay, is, is there a certain interest rate that's going with them now? If the individual today is approved, what interest rate would they be charged for that period of time?
I honestly don't know the rate today, to be honest with you. That's not.
But it's lower than the going mortgage rate?
Yes, it's typically one or two points under.
I can't hear you.
One or two points under typically.
Okay, one or two points, you say?
Yes, which translates into like percentage for, so.
So if I, if I could, if it was a 7%, 7% interest, they're, they're subsidizing it down to 5% interest rate.
Okay.
So it's 1% to 2% lower than what the market rate is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Silver?
You know, I brought this up last time. One of the important features about this, these homes is the low cost of heat and electricity. You want to repeat that again? It may, especially for the listening audience, there may have been people that weren't here on the last review.
Sure, yeah, we've had units that plug in around $30 a month for our all-electric units, which is what we've previously built across the street, so we don't utilize natural gas in either of those units. As I stated before, we will be pricing both, both natural gas and electric combination, and then also all-electric on these units, just due to the rising costs of construction. We're not sure which it would go, but even with the gas being part of the unit, we're probably around $50 a month. So that's, it goes back to that building envelope I was talking about with the high insulation values that we build at. It's a very tight unit.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approved PSP 23-0006, site plan review request of Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County, to allow for the construction of three duplexes for a total of six units of 6,000 square feet each.
Support.
You mean 1,000 square foot each?
Oh, what, what did I say?
6,000 square foot each.
1,000 square feet each.
Just wanted to make sure they're not building something too big. All right. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve PSP 23-0006.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have PZR ODD 23-0001.
Yes, good evening. Our last public hearing is overlay development district request by Design House Architecture for 5.56 acres of land for the construction of a four-story climate-controlled storage facility, an additional mixed-use development on West 8 Mile Road, a property located at 16025 Northwestern Highway. Existing zoning is B3 general business. You, counsel recently approved the ability to provide this as an overlay development district. As I had stated, the existing 128,000 gross square foot general office building will be converted to climate-controlled interior self-storage with a future phase of some type of mixed-use development along West 8 Mile. This is existing conditions. The building's been vacant for many years. There are barbed wire fencing along the perimeter of the property. Current zoning is B3 with the ODD eligible overlay. Future land use is supportive in the downtown development authority subarea. The overall master plan is a two-phase development with the conversion of the existing building in Phase 1, as well as all of the perimeter landscaping and design standards. This is phasing plan. And then Phase 1 is focused on the existing building. Phase 2 will be some type of, dependent on market, could be a hotel, could be a medical clinic, could be retail. And then the overall colored site plan. This is the floor plan of the interior of the existing facility, elevations. And then based on comments that the mayor brought up, they revised the canopy from more of a modern, traditional one to be in line with mid-century modern. We provided some design details, so it has kind of the winged roof. mid-century modern. We provided some design details. So, it has kind of the winged roof structure that's similar to existing mid-century modern down the street. Because they will have to meet the design standards of the Northland ODD, there's art requirements, there's substantial wall screening, ornamental fencing, and placemaking that will be infused in the site. Some design details of the pocket parks and pedestrian amenities at the corners. And then future potential mixed-use renderings for the property on Eight Mile. So, with that, I'll ask the petitioner to come up and talk a little bit about your business operation, hours of operation, and your future plans, please.
Good evening. My name is Matt Schiffman. I'm the CEO and managing member of PA Commercial. We're located here at twenty-six-five fifty-five Evergreen Road on Southfield. Also joined here by our architectural team at Design House. This has been quite a project for us that we're pretty excited about. As you've driven anywhere in Southfield, coming into town, this is kind of the main entrance here. So, this has been in works for a while, and we're really excited. You know, originally, we had, you know, for the last couple of years, had tried to repurpose this building. The office market has not been so favorable these days to return to work for a call center. So, based on market studies, we determined the highest and best use and a complement to the residential development adjacent to us here that this would be a good fit for the area.
And through the chair, we have Mr. Alisev, the DDA Director here. He'd like to make a few comments before the public hearing is opened.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may recall, my comments two weeks ago regarding this project, the board approved this with a recommendation to move forward for further consideration at its November board meeting. And really, there were three pockets for that recommendation. The first was the proximity of other vacant buildings and property adjacent to this particular building, the state of the office market with its current conditions and instability of whether people would be back in the office, or whether they will have a hybrid mode of working, or whether they're just gonna work at home altogether. And then the third piece was just its proximity to Northland. We thought that the thirteen-hundred tenants who occupy the apartments may need storage facility space should they not want to store, or should they want to store any unused furniture for later use. So, with that, it was recommended that we move forward to the planning department and then ultimately to this body.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will, we will now have a public hearing for PZR ODD two-three dash zero 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 one, a rezoning request for an overlay development district development agreement for five point five-six acres located at one-six-zero-two-five Northwestern Highway. You'll have three minutes. Please come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please. All right. Seeing no, seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Fraser?
To the planner, how many bike racks are gonna be in front of this?
Well, we require a minimum bike racks to accommodate four bikes. So, at least one rack that can accommodate four bikes.
Okay. Are there sidewalks up to it?
Sorry?
Are there sidewalks?
Yes. And where they're not, they have to do infill sidewalks.
Okay.
And they have to have a pedestrian connection from the main sidewalk system to the main entrance of the building per phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
I'm sorry, what was the hours of operation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Peter Stuhleir, Design House Architecture, thirty-three hundred Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. Regarding the hours of operation, this facility would be manned during hours such as eight to eight PM and then unmanned, but secured for the duration until about eleven or twelve, depending on the end tenant user for the storage. Does that make sense, everyone? You can access the building without the, without the office staff there, but certainly not twenty-four-hour.
Okay. And that's Monday through, Monday through Sunday?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? I did have a question. The building owner, is there several other buildings in the city that you own?
I'm not the building owner, but I do represent the real estate portfolio. And yes, there are other buildings that is owned by the same group, the Carmanos Cancer, which is at twenty-six-seven-hundred Loser, with the windmills on the roof, if you're familiar with that one. That's one of their properties, and another few on Southfield Road.
Okay. Have there ever been complaints, code enforcement, or any other building complaints for any of those properties?
I, I don't know. I can't comment on that. I know we had a few issues here with some parking lot things, which we addressed, that Al had brought up to me. But as far as that, I can't comment. And just for the record, this building is not gonna be, continue to be operated by that owner. So, the purpose here is to have this redevelopment. We're talking to a number of storage operators here that would like to take over ownership of this property once we, you know, achieve this zoning request.
The zoning request or the actual development?
The zoning request. We would look for the new party to take, take over and complete the construction.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could, just as a follow-up. So, the operator of the climate control facility would just be leasing or renting the property?
No, they would, they would own the property.
Okay. So, there will be a new owner for, for the building?
That's correct.
From the current owner. Okay, that wasn't clear. So, should this all get approved, there'll be a sale of the property to a new ownership?
That's correct.
And that, and does that also include the Phase Two property?
Oh, that would.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of PZR ODD two-three dash zero 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 one, the rezoning request for the Overlay Development District Development Agreement of Design House Architect as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, for approval of PZR ODD two-three dash zero 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 one as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the, through the chair, we also are requesting an introduction of ordinance number seventeen seventy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the introduction of ordinance number one-seven-seven-zero.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to introduce ordinance one-seven-seven-zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we have agenda items for discussion and our action. Our first item is approval to purchase new dispatch telecommunication consoles and flooring and related items.
All right. Thank you, counsel, mayor, assistant city administrator. This will be actually a complete overhaul of the current dispatch center. When I say overhaul, meaning relocate the current dispatchers to Oakland County and allow for the workers to come in and do it uninterrupted, complete overhaul. I'm talking flooring, furniture, technology, windows. I've asked Meredith, who is our communications director, to prepare a PowerPoint, because I thought it was important for you all to see the current conditions, and then what our goals are, again, to develop a state-of-the-art dispatch center, which we currently do not have. The last time the consoles and flooring were updated was back in two thousand and eight. And you look at the current conditions, the floor is raised, the furniture is worn and in desperate need of not only repair, but replacement. We're also looking to expand our dispatch center. We're doing a considerable recruiting frenzy, and we are looking to add more consoles. Right now, the current project has six consoles. We're gonna move to eight consoles to accommodate additional dispatchers. This would be, again, an extensive project. We did work with our purchasing department, put this out for bid. There were three companies that looked at it, but Evans, but Evans Console of Grapevine, Texas, was the ones that met the needs of this project, and they also part of a collaborative project, which gives us, as you all know, discounts on parts and whatnot. And I know one of the questions that always comes out of these conversations is where does the money coming from? So, the city has what's called a dispatch improvement fund. That fund currently has just a little bit over one point two million in it. So, your next question, where does this money come from? So, over the years with the police, not police, with the dispatchers and the fire department servicing the city of Lathville Village, a portion of that money goes into this, into this fund. Also, a portion goes to the fire department. And we've learned maybe about a year or so ago, talking to Austin, that this actually existed. And so, we got very excited about this, because again, we wanted to get this project moving forward and then having the funding to, to secure it. So, when we talk about the actual funding of this project, the consoles in its entirety, again, Meredith will go over the PowerPoint, will be about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the consoles, which will include fabrication and flooring of the new furniture and specification, removal of all existing furniture and flooring, installation of new flooring and furniture, shipping, and also a five-year preventative maintenance for electrical work and whatnot. There will also be about forty-five thousand in those technological upgrades that we discussed, and then about fifty-five thousand in case there's unexpected expenditures. So, the total price, again, should be a little bit less than that, and I don't expect fifty-five thousand dollars worth of expenditures. But we have that as a, as a umbrella to help us out in the event something did come up. But five hundred and twenty-five thousand will be the expected cost of this project. Again, we've got a balance of one point two million. So, at this point, I'm gonna pause, go over the PowerPoint, and again, Director Morgan will handle that.
Okay. Good evening, counsel. So, as Chief said, we would like to do this upgrade. Part of it is we're going from six to eight consoles. I actually personally recognize the need for that. We had a major storm, I don't, last June or the June before. I went into dispatch to try to help answer phones, and there was nowhere for me to sit, because all six spots were taken. So, I was like, oh, wow, okay, nowhere for me to sit. And I can't really help out other than maybe help behind the scenes. Some of our space is currently taken by storage that we don't need anymore, because we just don't keep paper the way we used to. The technology has changed. You know, as we know, technology changes all the time. So, we want to do some upgrading to our monitors and the way that they're arranged, so that they're, the information that they use and see on a daily basis is just more readily laid out and available to them. Just for example, one of the things is we're gonna get bigger monitors and turn this way, so that all of the information for everything that's happening is on one screen, and they don't have to scroll through it, okay? Part of it is their health and wellness. So, those consoles, and the reason they require maintenance, they can stand, they can sit, they have some, some lighting features and things that they can use that, that, you know, optimizes their workspace so that it's ergonomically and, and all of those things that we like to give to our employees. So, I also have some renderings and some pictures of what it's going to look like. This is a layout of the eight consoles. On the right side of that picture, my right, you see the windows and the wall. That's the hallway on the outside. There's one desk that faces the door. That's like the supervisor's desk where they would sit. And then you have the seven other positions where the dispatchers can sit and work. There's a table in the center that also raises and lowers that they can use as a work area, and it has some storage underneath. Here are some other renderings, just different viewpoints, one from each corner of the room showing what the furniture looks like. And this is just from either end of the room. So, the one on the bottom would be from those windows, and on the left-hand side, right-hand side on the top picture, you can see the monitors. We'll have four large monitors on the wall. We currently have access to the school cameras. We do have an agreement with the schools where we can log into their camera system if there's any reason that we need to. We do that for things that are basic, such as if there's a burglar alarm at that building, we can pull the camera up and see if there's actually somebody there. You know, for any other reason, we could do that. The status of everything that's going on appears on one screen through our CAD system. One of those monitors will have the status. So, if the chief were to walk in, say we're having a major incident, he doesn't need to interfere with what they're doing. He can look right on the screen and see what's going on. There is cameras for the campus here that we monitor, and those will be on one of those screens. And then there's also another screen that we can use for highway cameras and things like that. So, our current furniture and flooring was purchased in two thousand and eight. That was the third iteration of furniture that I have been through here. So, the new furniture will continue to feature standing desk and climate and lighting controls. Our upgrades include new monitors and monitor arms and the small form factor PCs, so we don't have the big computers underneath anymore. The new large monitors, we talked about some upgrades in the ergonomics for the operators so that they can optimally adjust those seven monitors that they look at and have them at their optimum height and viewing. We're gonna have individual mice and keyboards for everyone, so that they have their own, and it's hygienic, and it, it cuts down on the wear, basically. So, they'll have an individualized piece of equipment that they will have issued to them, and the cleaning and maintenance to keep everything working good and in good order. There is a buying cooperative through HDAC for the majority of this project, the majority of what's included here. What's not under HDAC, you know, we're already gonna have boots on the ground and people working, and, and we want the finishes to match. So, you're talking about a cabinet and some lockers for the, in the back, they have a back locker room with half-size lockers where they keep their headsets or their purse or their coat or whatever. And then, so the price includes, as the chief said, the furniture, the project management, removing everything, installing everything, and the cleaning and maintenance of the equipment. I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Do you want to talk about, will, I know one question is, will nine-one-one operations be disrupted?
Absolutely not. We can't do that. We will move and operate in Pontiac. There is, the county maintains a backup center at the old Pontiac Police Department, which is now an Oakland County Sheriff's Substation. Because all of our equipment in the county is networked, meaning we all work on the same network system, for, we'll have the new Oakland County radios by then, by the time that the project is actually done, which would be later this year. And our phones and our CAD systems are all networked. So, basically, I walk into that dispatch center in Pontiac, I sign in under my Southfield login, I have all of my Southfield things that I need to do the job. So, nothing will be interrupted.
Thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Well, that was my first question. But my second question is, once approved, when will everything start, and how long would it take?
It takes three to four months for them to fabricate, because they actually do build the furniture to our specifications, and then they will ship it and install it.
And the start date?
I, as soon as the PO is issued, and I can give them a PO number, they will start fabricating and building.
And my last question is, I've seen it before in the dispatch centers, that they're sort of open, if you will. But one would always think that you would want them separate to here. Like, I would think one call might disrupt another call, but it seems to be the case that that's the... Like, I would think one call might disrupt another call, but it seems to be the case that that's the layout?
That is, and I will tell you, it is actually better for us to be open next to each other because we can hear what everybody else is doing. So, for example, if I'm taking a call of something that's in progress, the police dispatcher or the fire dispatcher can hear that and actually send units before I even get it into the CAD system. So, it does actually help our efficiency and help us work together to have what they call, that's like a bullpen-style dispatch center. The furniture we currently have, I'll tell you from my experience, is now that way, but when we first installed it, it had the wall in the middle. And what we found, because the previous one was open, we went to this, we went back to the open style because it didn't work as well for us to be separated.
That makes sense, thank you. That's it.
Councilman Brightwell?
Meredith, this council, with permission of, trying to give you guys the best of and keep yours up to date as possible. Given the design that you come up with, is this everything that you need or want at this point in time to make you one of the best staffed and best laid-out dispatch centers in Oakland County?
Yes.
Okay, so this is state-of-the-art?
This is state-of-the-art, everything is, it will help us, you know, arrange things in a way that we can work together as best as we can and give them the information. You know, like I said, the way the monitors are displayed, you wouldn't think is that important, but it is that important. Like, the information that they're looking at and have to use, it's at their disposal. For it to be laid out in a particular way is very helpful to getting the job done, you know, as efficiently and effectively as possible.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Another term I use is like world-class. I know, I know we're not trying to compete with world-class kind of thing. I used to be around people who were world-class. Is this, is this a state-of-the-art?
This is state-of-the-art and I would invite, I, in fact, I plan to talk to the chief about maybe having a little open house when we get it all done to invite everyone in to see it. Because I, I, I'm really excited about it. I think it would be, it's gonna be amazing and something that our dispatchers will appreciate because it gives them the tools that they need to do their job the best and the best that they can do it.
Okay, this, this is another selling point for the city of Southfield.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't wanna jump the gun, but you got my vote.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes, is this turnkey operation where the people come in from the, the factory where you bought it and put it all together and turned it over to you?
It's one company, so they will, they will, they will tear everything out, flooring, furniture, everything. They do all of it together. So, I, of course, I'll be here to, you know, supervise that, but yes. So, basically, they're just gonna come in and do their work and there will be project milestones, of course, that we'll have to sign off on and, and as, you know, things progress. But yes, they'll come in and do everything and just turn it over.
How much training is involved?
In?
With your dispatchers?
How much training do we give them when they're hired or, or as far as?
With this new equipment?
For the new equipment is, it's basically the same as what they're using. So, they already have adjustable desks and that kind of thing. We'll probably have to show them how to, you know, make the adjustments that they need to make, but it's, it's very quick, there's, there's not much to train them on.
Okay.
So, there are some technological pieces, like, for example, the controls of the climate and the lighting and all that. There is a unit that goes with that furniture that they need to learn how to use to make their adjustments so that it's, you know, the way they want it when they're sitting there working. But it, it would be a five, 10-minute, you know, demonstration to show them how to work it.
Do you have enough work for the other two consoles that you'll be putting in?
Yes, yes, we have enough work. The, we, we don't have enough dispatchers at this point, we're always working on that, but we are certainly not getting less busy in the city. So, there's plenty of, you know, and like I said, when we have large things happen, like a big storm blows through, we need to have extra space for people to help.
Okay. Today, with the equipment that you have, when the seventh call comes in, where does it go?
Well, it comes here. The system is set up that if a call goes unanswered for 30 seconds, a 911 call, it is automatically forwarded to the sheriff's office. So, we will, you know, we triage those calls. So, if I'm on a 911 phone and I can put the person on hold or maybe I've already got all the information I need, I can disconnect or put that call on hold and pick up another one. So, just to give you a quick example of, if there's an accident on the freeway, we get multiple calls for that because there are a lot of people driving by. We'll say, are you calling for the accident here? And if they say yes, we can quickly disconnect that call and grab the next one. So, it's part of their training to be able to work through those calls quickly. But as I said, if a call goes unanswered for 30 seconds, it, the phone system will automatically forward it to the county and they will answer.
Okay, and once the new equipment's in, who will be doing the maintenance on it when it has a problem?
The maintenance will be through the company Evans Consols that we're purchasing it from. So, they will come out and repair it. They will also come out and do regular maintenance. I believe it's twice a year. It's either once or twice a year, they'll do regular maintenance because we have a lot of, you know, moving parts there because you can sit and stand and that sort of thing.
But you don't have anybody in your workforce or in Southfield that, that would be able to repair it?
That would repair it, no. We would leave it to them because it's their equipment and we're gonna pay them to do that, so.
So, you shut, you shut a console down to wait for them to show up?
Yeah, and they have a, there's a, the maintenance contract includes the, I don't know off the top of my head and I don't have it with me unfortunately, but it includes things like how long it takes them to respond when we call them for a repair.
I'm just thinking that, you know, my house is on fire and there's, you know, 20 calls coming in and you only have a maximum of eight people. I'm gonna get a little nervous if the flames get bigger and bigger.
Right, well, it's not, you know, just because the furniture isn't working doesn't mean that we can't use the phone and the computer. So, it wouldn't necessarily mean that it's unusable, it just would mean, you know, maybe you can't adjust it the way you want to.
Well, I'm not concerned about whether you're standing up or sitting down.
Right, exactly.
If you want to know how quickly the fire department's gonna be in my house.
Absolutely, and, and we, we, we do our best to get those calls answered as quickly as possible, so. Like I said, if they go unanswered, they go somewhere. 911 calls never go unanswered, they get forwarded either to your primary backup and if your primary backup doesn't answer, there is a secondary backup. So, they never go unanswered.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, Councilwoman Taylor?
Oh, thank you. I saw that this was for the dispatch room. My question is, since we're doing all of this and everybody's gonna be out, are you also thinking about updating any of the other rooms, like your kitchen, bathroom?
The kitchen, we are, is actually currently out for bid or will be shortly. The kitchen also is in desperate need of an update, so I will be coming before you as soon as we get the bids back on that and I have an idea of, you know, who we'd like to select for that. The bathroom has already been done. We did that, I think, two years ago. There's a single, if you're not familiar, there's a single-person bathroom in the dispatch center that they can use, you know, so they don't have to go outside the room if it's busy. But that was done, I think, two years ago.
Okay, I, I was concerned because the snack box, you know.
Oh, yeah, well, we, yeah, the snack, the snacks might have to go away for a little while, but we do have to work on the kitchen too, so.
And, and everything will be ADA compliant?
Absolutely, yeah.
And are you looking at doing those comfort rugs, you know, like for people to stand on or sit on? I know when I had the raising, the table and stuff, we also got like the, it's better if you order it all at the same time because when you start getting it separate, it costs more. And I didn't know if that was something, maybe you don't even complain about it, I don't know.
No, well, the flooring is gonna be different in that, right now, we have that kind of wood laminate flooring. It's gonna be a, a thick, like vinyl tile flooring, so it probably will be more comfortable to stand on and actually wear better and it'll be quieter than the flooring we have in there now.
And through the chair to our city administrator, deputy city administrator, I had mentioned before about the facilities capital improvement and this is not a part of that, so we don't have to worry about it being, you know, taken back out once our project is being considered. It's not even a part of it.
Correct, it's not, correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Council? And Meredith, you said once, it's gonna take a couple, like a month or two to build these consoles, but once they come to, from demo to move back in is about three weeks?
Three weeks, yep, two and a half to three weeks, I expect, because they call that a clean room. We're not in there, they can tear everything out and put it back in without disrupting our operation.
Okay, any other questions, Council?
Oh, I did have one. On the employees, I know that they're not complaining about going to Pontiac, but are we, you know, helping them with gas or anything because they'll be going to a different location? Is that something we're looking at or no?
So, we have a couple of options, we could help with transportation. What we learned is a number of them live not that far from Oakland County and so it's gonna be easier transition, so it kind of works out. But we'll look at if anybody has any issues. But right now, they'll pay for themselves.
Thank you.
Council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve, item A, the purchase of a new dispatch telecommunication console and flooring and related items as presented.
Support?
It is moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to purchase new dispatch telecommunication consoles and flooring and related items as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have approval to enter into an interlocal agreement with Oak Park for equality aquatic facility use.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Russell Malberg, Recreation Operations Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department and I'm here seeking authorization from you all for the opportunity for us to enter an agreement with the city of Oak Park. With this agreement, our residents, Southfield residents, would be able to get the resident rate to use the pool at Oak Park, as well as the opportunity for us to rent the pool for exclusive use on six different days, two, two-hour periods on each of those days throughout the summer. With our pool being closed and unsafe to open or manage, we wanted an aquatic outlet for our residents. We have one more year to go before our splash pad over at Beachwoods Park is set to open. We're hoping to open that Memorial Day of 2024 and so we've got one year to make sure our residents have some sort of outlet relatively close to here. And we've already been in contact with the director, Lori Stasiak, at Oak Park and we've already got the contract draft approved by our city attorney here. And it was approved through their council at Oak Park last week. So, we are, I'm here seeking authorization as the final step to be able to do that. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? Ask Councilwoman Frazier?
Once this is approved, are we ready with our communication piece to put it on Facebook, on Instagram? Make sure it's on the front of our webpage so everyone is aware of the hours and then the free?
Absolutely.
Southfield days, et cetera, et cetera?
Yep, we've already got the days ironed out. We've got three Saturdays and three Sundays ironed out as us renting Southfield-only days. We'll get those put up right away. We'll even link to their page where it shows active updated times for open swims each day. And we would be sure to post it on our Facebook and Instagram as well.
Okay, and you're working also with our community relations director?
Yes, yes, we will work with, we'll probably write something up in collaboration with Michael Mannion and get something to post it across all of the cities as well.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign this partnership with the city of Oak Park to provide access to their aquatic facility as described herein and not to exceed $25,000 for the aquatic year 2023.
Support?
It is moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the approval of the interlocal agreement with Oak Park for the aquatic facility use not to exceed $25,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an authorization to purchase benches and trash receptacles for pedestrian and bus stop improvements.
Good evening again. If you, as you may recall, in fiscal year 219, 220, just before the pandemic hit us, we did a comprehensive study of 350-plus bus stops located in the city of Southfield, many of which were lacking in key walks, benches, trash receptacles, signage, and other amenities. We cross-referenced existing ridership from DOD and SMART. We looked at transit propensity, the likelihood of, of people utilizing public transit, and we came up with a prioritization list. As of 2022, we started to implement these bus stop improvements, not only at actual bus stop locations, but at strategic sidewalks where a number of pedestrians were utilizing, walking to and from the residence to religious institutions, to shopping, medical, office, jobs, schooling, and so forth. And we started rolling out some themed streetscape furnishings. In the city center, we've installed over 54 sets of benches and trash receptacles, the silver one indicated there. And then we adopted a slightly less costly, but still an attractive bench and trash set for the rest of the city. So, in 2022, we installed nine sets of benches and trash receptacles. So far, in 2023, we've installed 12 sets of benches and trash receptacles. These are some various locations throughout the city. Recently, with the emphasis on Nine Mile Corridor, we installed another set of nine benches and trash receptacles. And these are the next set of priorities that we'd like to take advantage of purchasing an additional 15 sets of trash and vent receptacles. Given the fact that it took six months due to logistics and construction materials and costs, we'd like to get them ordered this year, this fiscal year, utilizing existing money in the planning department land improvement budget. Some quick installations that have been targeted are two at the fire station located at Nine Mile and Beach because we don't need to negotiate easements, we can keep them out of the rideaway and eventually, there'll be some additional pathway widening and connectivity on Beach into Beachwoods Park. The former fire station on Nine Mile, we have one location strategically planned at that site, city-owned. We've identified two locations near American Drive that overlook the wetlands area. Also, we've noticed a lot of, a lot more pedestrian activity along the Nine, 11 Mile Corridor. And then, this is one bus stop just east of Telegraph that has a plastic garbage can, there's no concrete, it's just mud, and this is heavily utilized. I observe people standing there every morning and evening. So we would like to install some concrete there and get a bench and trash receptacle. This area will future receive a bike path that we'll connect into. But since it's being heavily utilized right now by bus patrons, just every day I drive by there, I feel sorry that they have to stand in the mud and they don't have any other amenities there. So with that, our proposal tonight is to get authorization through landscape forms to purchase 15 sets of benches and trash receptacles and have those installed as soon as we're able to do that.
Councilwoman Fraser?
Of the 355 locations, how many have trash receptacles?
Well, probably just a couple dozen at this point. And mostly, I've noticed either adjacent property owners are putting out Rubbermaid plastic garbage cans or it's, it's stuff that we've installed or in combination wherever there typically is a bus shelter. SMART has a very small container, but it's usually not sufficient to handle all the trash. And I know the mayor's office, Coats, and myself get complaints all the time about overflowing trash at these locations.
Should we put some expense to these bus stops to make sure that people don't throw trash on the, on the ground and it blows around?
Well, Mr. Fraser, that's what we've been really trying to do about a dozen or more each year within our budget that's been allowed. The complexity is, as you know, we've got state highway, road commission of Oakland County Highway and City Highway. So whenever we do work in other jurisdictions, it's additional permitting. We have many areas of right-of-way that the slope is too steep or there's not a sidewalk connection to even get people there. So what we've been trying to do is focus, one, on highest priority that can be done in the most efficient manner, both in time and money. So we haven't gotten to that point yet where we start tackling the more difficult grades in bus stops because there's such a great need right now with the higher priority ones. And I will be coming back to council and a part of your budget discussion is for a substantial increase to allow us to do more of this in next fiscal year's budget.
Okay, I'm asking this out of ignorance because I don't know. Are you saying that some of the benches at bus stops aren't Southfield-controlled? They're, somebody else puts them out there, but we're putting garbage cans?
Yes, yes, because I think the adjacent property owners are tired of picking up litter. So they're trying to do their best and they, they put this hodgepodge of cheaper residential benches and/or trash receptacles just to try to meet the need of where the, they're heavily used and there's not enough. And even the bus transit systems that when they do provide trash receptacles, they're undersized for the amount of the volume of trash. So we, in many cases, we've gone in where there's an existing smaller trash can and put one of our larger 55-gallon drum decorative trash receptacles to help maintain litter.
Okay, the reason I ask that question, seems like that should be part of the design of the, of the bus stop. Because if people are going to be there with a bench and stuff, they're going to have sandwiches or, or papers or something that a trash receptacle that's of reasonable size ought to be designed right into the thing.
I totally agree with you. I think it's been 40 years of, of lack of proper attention and planning. We've been a very auto-dominated community. It's been one of my personal passions is to provide more pedestrian amenities, more walkability and key walks. And we have done a tremendous job in the city center. As stated, we've installed 54 sets of benches and trash receptacles and we've upgraded virtually every bus stop within our area because we've had dedicated funding to do that. Outside of the city center, recently, council has also recognized the need. And for the past two years, you've given me a decent modest budget of about $100,000. And that only gets us so far. So we've been trying to work with extending our bike path and sidewalk network. And then after those are in place, upgrading the benches and trash. If you, on Nine Mile at Boverick Woods Park, you noticed we got the pathway in and we just put a couple sets of benches and trash receptacles, not only at the bus stops, but I'd like to do it about one every one-eighth mile to give people who are walking out with their dogs or stuff a place to sit and rest if they need it.
Yeah, I guess the bottom line is, if it's within our city limits, we're going to get the blame for it anyhow. You know, if it's trashy-looking.
Right.
So that's why I thought we were taking care of the ones that we controlled, but apparently we're not controlling all of the ones.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
But I think we've been
Let's keep working at them until we get them all done.
We've been chipping away at it and, you know, recently, we've had those challenges with logistics and supply like everybody else. So stuff that was ordered last October only showed up a month ago. And then we have to get contractors on board and have concrete poured and then have them installed. We're doing that as quickly as feasible within our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Mr. Crowe, this is a, a good project and a good addition to the city. And just on, it looked like, to me, has, has, has there ever been an appeal to our business community and or the general public? And my, my approach to this is because a couple of years ago, an organization appealed to me and we got a bench and receptacle placed in a, in a very strategic location that was good for the city. And this is just, have we ever did a little soft appeal to the business community and or the public to make, for them to make donations?
Well, currently, the businesses within the city center contribute five cents per square foot of each year. So that money is reinvested into the city. And you know that I, I was intimately involved in that donation from the organization. But how much handholding, took about nine months to, to get the, the funding and to get the resources there. So it's very time-consuming. We have had partnerships and we do occasionally work with people who want to donate money for tree planting or bench. We do get those routinely throughout the year. More importantly is, we're looking at our local adjacent businesses to help keep it cleaned and maintained. And I am constantly chasing after the late-night weekend auto crash into signs and benches and trying to get reimbursed or get it, get it cleaned up and a new one reinstalled. And all those are very time-consuming. So yes, in some cases, we've had partnerships with local businesses. As a matter of fact, on Central Park Boulevard, the El Cove, as part of their approval, they agreed to purchase three benches and trash receptacles. And then we partnered with them on donating a few more. They installed it and they're maintaining it. And so as we get new development, we've had those types of partnerships where the private businesses are actually purchasing through us so that we can maintain our brand and we know our high-quality standards. So that's another example.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Excuse me, I would just like to say thank you for starting this program when we did several years ago. I've noticed a lot of people are utilizing the benches throughout the city and it just always puts a smile on my face because for years, we had some of these old, ugly wooden benches that you'd get a sliver on if you sat on it. Now they've been replaced with either the silver one or the black one. And I'm noticing a lot more seniors that are also utilizing, walking together or just sitting there, just enjoying the weather. So thank you and I'm glad that we're continuing to fund this program every single year.
Yeah, and I only can do it with, with the support of the council, but it might be corny. But I also, when I'm driving into work and I see people sitting in the benches I've installed or the ones at the bus stop at Evergreen and Nine Mile, the very first day, people were sitting in them, it made me feel good.
Yes, nothing further.
Any other questions, council? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to authorize the purchase of 15 benches and 15 receptacles from landscape forms in the amount of $50,042.36 with the funds provided in the fiscal year 2223 Planning Department Budget Land Improvement Account.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Fraser, to approve the purchase of benches and trash receptacles for pedestrian and bus stop improvements as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a receipt of bids for audiovisual engineering services.
Good evening, council. Our AV engineer basically keeps Cable 15 on the air, not only the audio/video recording, but also the lighting and the broadcast to cable and the internet. We have used John Stillson as our video, audio/video engineer for years, both as an employee of Film Tools. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. Both as a employee of Film Tools and then when Film Tools moved away from onsite service as an independent contractor. His work's been great, he's creative, prompt, good to work with. Unfortunately, up to this point, we were never able to say that he was the best available price. So Cable 15 Tech Services and Purchasing partnered together to publish bids through Mitten and to solicit individual bids for an audiovisual engineer. And now we can say that by far, CKS Services, which is John Stillson's company, is the low bidder, up to one-third of the cost from our other bid. So now we have a great, we have the person we want, but we can say that for sure, they are the best price possible. And I'd like to point out that not only, not only are his hourly prices much lower, but Sound Planning from Redford Township, the only other bidder on this, their price is door-to-door. So that from when they leave to when they arrive back, John's is while we're here. So we are very comfortable with these bids. We recommend a two-year contract with, with CKS Services of Brighton with the option of two one-year extensions. Also, Cable 15 would like to particularly thank Renee Anahosa and Ray Townsell from Purchasing for their excellent work on this, they really helped us out.
Okay, thank you, council, any questions? Okay, Councilwoman Hoag?
I am.
Do I make a motion?
I can. Put me on the spot. Let me pause it, one second.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, I recommend that we approve and award the audiovisual engineering services contract to CKS Services of Brighton, Michigan for two years with the option of two one-year extensions.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Fraser, to approve the receipt of bids for audiovisual engineering services to CKS Services of Brighton, Michigan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have approval of purchase for Freedom of Information Management software.
Thank you, Council President. The clerk's office is coming to council today to purchase software for our Freedom of Information Act. Currently, right now, the clerk's office receives notifications from the city website. I personally get emails. Occasionally, residents may come to the counter and we're keeping track on an Excel spreadsheet. We work in conjunction with the police department, but at this point, because of the numbers, have they have grown? We need a software. We need a program that will allow us to let the department heads know, your FOIA specialist in those departments know, your five days are coming up under the law. This is day four, I need a letter to go out by day five, ask you for a 10-day extension. Right now, it's a lot of work on our office and all the other departments, it's a lot. They're keeping up with their everyday work plus the FOIA. This will, this software will allow them to receive a notification and communicate with the clerk's office, the city attorney's office to know, hey, I need help with this particular FOIA, can I redact this information? Can I not redact this information? What can we do to make sure we're staying compliant with the laws? This went out to bid, we had four companies. This entire process, I'm going to be very honest with you, started back in 2022 with me. Okay, so now we've got a software program that I actually witnessed with another clerk at a conference. And I was like, I came back and told Clerk Bettis, this is the one we want. And they were part of one of the companies that came back with a bid and they met all of our criteria.
Counsel, any questions?
Who is the bidder?
The one that won is next request.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I only have one question, I'm sorry. Why did the one company not qualify?
They were not able to give us recommendations. One of our requirements are, are you working with any other municipalities in Michigan? It's a smaller company and they honestly could not tell us any other municipalities that they were working with.
Did you fill out a FOIA?
All right, Councilwoman Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the approval of the purchase of Freedom of Information Management software from next request of Manhattan, Kansas for total expenditure in our 2223 fiscal budget of $11,091 with the funds available in the city clerk computer software account.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, for the approval of purchase of the Freedom of Information Management software as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're up to the council portion of our meeting. We have one item.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the travel expense reimbursement report for Councilwoman Lenny Taylor attendance at the MML Capcom Conference, April 18th through 19th in Lansing, Michigan.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the travel expense reimbursement report for Councilwoman Lenny Taylor for the MML Capcom, April 18th through 19th, 2023 in Lansing, Michigan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
One abstention, motion passes. Thank you. Counsel, we will start with Councilwoman Fraser?
Our chairperson of our historical humanitarian information is not here this evening. And she asked me to make a, make the presentation, but she left me three. And this is the Asian-American Month for Observants. And she gave me three write-ups. One is for Lu Gim Gong. He's a horticulturist, he was a horticulturist. From eight, he was born in 1860 and he died in 1925. And he was responsible, responsible for improving the different kinds of, of fruits, especially those citrus fruits that are grown in Florida. And so over the, over the years, he improved on oranges, Valencia oranges, grapefruit, and other oranges. The second one is, I'm going to mess up this name, I think. Mabel Ping Hua Li, and she's a suffragette. She was born in 1896, died in 1966. And she worked, even though she couldn't be, she couldn't vote. She, she was from China and she came to the United States. And because of the laws, she could not vote. And she came to the United States, and because of the laws, she could not vote. First of all, because she was a woman, but then they had the second one, the Chinese Act that prevented her from, from voting. But she still worked on getting the right for women to vote. And so she's, was noted in history. The third is, um, Miru Yamazaki. And we all know the, I think most of us know, he is greatest, one of his greatest designers. He's an architect. He designed the Two Towers in, in New York that were, yeah, in two thousand one. And so those three people are the ones for this month that our historian would have done a much better job at presenting than I did. But, um, when I was in school, we all knew that the Ellis Island was a place where aliens came in, foreign people came in. But that was only from the Europe. There were other ports of entry for other people. One was the southern port where people from Africa and the islands came in under the flag of the slave ship. There was also, on the west coast, there was Angel Island where the, uh, people came from the China, Japan, and all. And Angel Island is still there. It's, it's more of a museum now than, than anything. But you can see it if you go across the, the bridge of the, on the way to the East Bay of San Francisco. So there were more than Ellis Island where people came to the United States to find a better life. Most of us tried to find a better life. So those are my three, uh, I, uh, those are my three things for this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that the city of Southfield is seeking entries for the Seventh Annual Photo, Photo Prize Competition and Public Art Exhibition. I believe the deadline is May twenty-sixth. So it's just around the corner. The competition will run from June through August. And the finalists will be posted on the city's website. So please make sure, if you're interested, to visit the city's website for more information. Also, this Friday, the city will be hosting the Memorial Day Program. And I believe it will be nine o'clock here in the chambers. And I won't say anything further. The mayor's shaking his head. Maybe we're gonna mention it, so, okay. And that's all I, oh, and then next Monday, the city offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day, so. And I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cruz?
I have nothing for this evening.
Councilwoman Taylor?
No, I just wanna remind everybody that May is Military Appreciation Month, so that we should thank our veterans and anyone that's in all of the arms of service. So thank you to you, Mr. Brightwell, for your service. As you did. And no, all my other comments were already stated, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I'm, I'll hit check on what Ms. Taylor mentioned. I didn't wanna, if I ever watch counsel, I'm really pro-military. And it, it, it came to my mind, this was past Saturday, and when I was watching a sports game on TV, and Miss Brenda Griner, who was previously held captive by the Russians, she indicated that now, after something being taken away from her, which was her freedom, now she really stands up in the national anthem and plays, and she really appreciates America. Yeah, and that brought to mind that, and I've used these terms over the years when I made a speech at the State and Memorial Day, if it was not for our military, we would be attacked on the United States. Because America is, and we have some our own now. We assess efficient as a national resources, na, as a national resource. And a lot of countries who are aggressive around the world, they would invade America. And they don't organize them, not because we have one of the best militaries in the country, in the world. And we proved ourselves to be, have individuals who are, uh, they say that this is the home of the free, but really it's the, because it's the home of the brave. So I just wanted to say that, uh, the military, we will be now make sure that we, our values are upheld and that our individuals who live here, they are free to express themselves any way, any way they wish, like we have individuals who wish not to do certain things. But I bring it up again, Ms. Griner, she meant she respect what this country has meant to her and what she, what was lost to her for ten, ten or eleven months there. So that's my, my, my way of just saying we, we should always appreciate our military because they, they have that line of defense. Individuals wanna attack us because of what we, what we, what we stand for. And I would say wanna attack us because of, you know, the national resources of this country. Somebody came in and dominated this country, it would be, uh, another powerful country. But it is my popular way of saying, thank you to our military.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Just quickly, thank you. Unfortunately, I missed the Friends of Southfield Public Arts Event this weekend because I was at training. However, I still intend to participate through the fundraiser. But I was grateful to attend the MML training this past weekend, and it was very good. And I've got some very great information that I brought back to better myself in this position, but specifically on planning and zoning. So we had a great four-hour class. And our instructors spoke very highly of our planner, Mr. John Enos from Carlisle Wortman Company, if you, hopefully he knew you. And so he gave me a better appreciation of your position, so I was glad to have been in that class. And he didn't know I was gonna say this, but I did tell him, don't tell you things that I said, so. But again, it was a great opportunity for me to learn, and I'm just thankful and grateful for this opportunity that the city allows me to take. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I just wanna wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. Hopefully you'll be safe, spend some time with your family, thank you service member, and remember those who also gave their lives. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Well, first of all, we have a, I need an approval from counsel tonight. As we've been talking about for quite some time now, we have our Nine Mile Connectivity, Placemaking, and Recreation Corridor that is a multi-jurisdictional project connecting I seventy-five to I two seventy-five involving the communities of Hazel Park, Verndale Oak Park, Southfield, Farmington, and Farmington Hills. Currently, we're working on Phase One in Southfield. As you know, we put a, approved a pathway from Evergreen to Prescott that where there was no walkway. And we have plans to do the next half-mile from Prescott to Losher. And work is being done now in surveying the area between Selfa Road and Evergreen. We continue to work on fundraising for art on Nine Mile as, once the pathways are in, as you know, we layer in benches, trash cans, weight-bearing signage. Out here, everything from bird cages to dug respite stations. And so we're, you know, again, encouraging people to walk and bike and by putting in these pathways that are eight to ten feet wide. So one of the things that has bothered me for some time is that the corner of Nine Mile and Greenfield, when you enter the city of Southfield at the advanced building, there's this little green sign that says, "Southfield City Limit." And then there's a much larger sign that says, "No overnight parking from two AM to five AM." That's your welcome. And so we wanna change that. And so I went to Lawrence Tech and said, you know, you did these beautiful signs, welcome signs on Telegraph, Northwestern Highway, Eleven Mile, and Greenfield. Would you do another one? And this would be part of our Nine Mile Pathway. And so Lawrence Tech has agreed to pay for the sign that is identical to the other ones that exist. Welcome, Southfield, and then home of Lawrence Tech University. So I am required to get counsel permission for anything that goes in the right-of-way. So I'm asking this evening for you to approve a placement of a welcome to Southfield signage that is being provided by Lawrence Tech in the right-of-way outside the advanced building.
Counsel, any, any questions on this item for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the proposed gateway entrance to be located in the Nine Mile right-of-way. Subject to approval by the city planner and city engineering with funds that were, that's gonna come from the previously approved metro funds, metro act funds transferred to the planning department.
Support.
I, I would just add that that, those funds are only for the foundation. And the Lawrence Tech is actually paying for this, the sign.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the welcome to Southfield signage in the right-of-way at Nine Mile Road and Greenfield Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I do wanna mention that Councilwoman Hoag made mention too. This weekend, we held a three-day fundraiser for the Friends of South Public Arts. I appreciate the attendance there by Councilwoman Banks and Council President Montalbaum, as well as City Administrator Zorn Planning, City Planner Terry Crowe, Deputy City Planner Thomas Payson, our Economic Development Director Shelley Freeman, and our Police Chief, Alvin Barron. I need to give a lot of credit to the Chair of the Art Commission, Dolores Flag, as well as my assistant, Vicky Perry, who helped me put this event together at the, the former Brooks, Brooks Barn, dating back to eighteen sixty or earlier. The event, all of the proceeds of this event will go to art on Nine Mile Road as we layer on art. And one other thing related to this, this, tomorrow night, we're having a public hearing on the Nine Mile Corridor Plan. As you know, we have study money grant from SEMCOG and from Oakland County Economic Development. And so this planning session, or this town hall, for anybody that's interested in attending to see what, what's in the works, will take place at six PM at eighteen hundred West Nine Mile Road. That's the epicenter building, former IBM building. There's a large first-floor conference room, so we'll be in the conference room tomorrow. You are all invited to attend. And again, this is an opportunity for the public to see the plans that we're working on, particularly for Phase One of our Nine Mile Corridor Connectivity Plan. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask, is there, can you share with us how you can still donate?
Oh, the Friends of South Public Arts is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit. Any donations are tax-deductible. You'll get, anybody gets a receipt that they can use when they, if they're filing income tax by listing their deductions. And that's in care of the mayor's office at City Hall.
Thank you.
And I apologize. I meant to say, my husband and I attended on Friday night. It was cold. It was raining. It was, actually, it was pouring. It was slushy. But what an unbelievable presentation. The owner that renovated that bar, and he was hilarious. I just can't, I mean, the history involved behind the scenes with that, with the renovation of that barn is amazing. Is there any way that the slide presentation that was presented on Friday, I'm assuming it was the same one Saturday and Sunday, can be put on our website? Because there was so much history there that, you know, we left proud and happy. And we're excited to see what's gonna come out of the River Edge.
Well, it was taped, but the, and certainly the slide, the PowerPoint can be put on the city website.
The PowerPoint will be on the city website?
Certainly. Cable, City Cable Fifteen was there taking and doing interviews on Friday night.
And that might be a nice idea. Some of the, the comments that Tom, the owner, made with reference to when he was lifting the building, et cetera, et cetera. You know, if we could add those to the clips, I mean, it's, I just think everyone in Southfield should.
I know it was recorded. I'll have to check with Gary and Cable.
Well, you may not wanna do the whole recording, but.
I mean, it really was.
It was amazing.
This is eight years in the making.
Yes.
And it was just, Friday night in particular, with the weather and being what it was, but inside, it was so warm, and the barn just looked phenomenal. And it's back to life with contemporary uses. It's ADA compliant. Restrooms, heat, lights, water and sewer. Of course, the barn didn't have those back when. So it's, it's a great piece of history saved.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I want to just reaffirm my, my love of art. I made my donation. I was there to, I was, it was, I had an unfortunate end that Saturday, and I would have been there, but I was there to make my donation, so. I feel satisfied.
Thank you.
Anything else, mayor?
That's it.
All right, thank you. City Administration?
Thank you, Council President. Administration has nothing to report, but I would like to thank the mayor and the city planner for their efforts on the Nine Mile Corridor. Benches look great. They get a lot of use. I've already put the bike route to use. I love it. I'm looking forward to the expansion. I would also like to let everyone know that Terry Crowe was out there with pruners, trimming around the benches, so he is definitely not just a planner. He is a full-service planner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, City Attorney?
Yes, good evening, mayor, council. Tonight.
Tonight, the first item that I have is an amendment to Section, can you hear me okay? Fuck, I went out.
No, it's fine.
1.314 of Chapter 9 of the Southfield City Code, the Southfield Employee Retirement System. There was a meeting held on March 13th of this year, there was a presentation with HR and, I never can get this right, Gabriel, Gabe, okay, Gabriel Rhodes, in regards to management non-union employees, and specifically, it was dealing with those that were hired, and I have HR here, correct me if I say this wrong, November 1st, 2008 through June 30th, 2022. And the non-union management employees, based on the discussions at that May, sorry, March 13th meeting, would have 60 calendar days to elect and writing on city supplied forms to enter the SERs retirement system. And those that elected to enter into the SERs program will be offered Tier 2 benefits or a blended retirement plan. Also talked about how they would be able to purchase five years of all service credit available at the date of entering SERs, and the cost of service credit purchase will be determined by Gabriel Roder, Smith and Company, and that employees may transfer funds to pay for service credit from current city defined contribution pension plan. Overall monies must, due must be paid within two years from the date of selection to enter SERs. And I'm just going over this just as refreshing, non-union management employees, electing to enter into SERs are obligated to pay all the amounts due for the purchase of service credit that is not funded by city council as part of this resolution. And the provisions of the city pension ordinance apply to employees elected to enter, all of them, sorry, all other provisions of the city pension ordinance apply to employees electing to enter. So, in the amendment, I pretty much took what I just read to you. There was a resolution at the end of the meeting on March 13th that council approved amending it, and so in Section 4, which you receive in your package, and hopefully you could all read that, I had it put in red so you could see the difference, and again, management group employees hired between November 2005 through June 30th, 2022 and currently employed. And it goes in, once again, talking about the 60 days, it talks about the purchase and references to other sections that are already incorporated into this ordinance. It talks about those that are hired after March 13th, 2023, how they would be in a blended plan, and also if they fail to elect to participate in the retirement system, being those that were hired after March 13th, 2023, they will be required to execute a written opt-out of the retirement system, complete necessary paperwork for a defined contribution plan. The main thing, of course, one of the issues was that we want to make sure that there's a city supplied form, that was one of the issues that was discussed and now incorporated, that those forms will be in the HR file for the employee as well as on record with SERs. So with that, if you have any questions, I can try to answer, and if I can't answer, then I'm going to turn to HR and say, "Help."
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I guess to my colleagues, I thought this item was supposed to come back to us with reference to how many people were going to opt-in, how many people were not going to opt-in, and I personally have not received anything. And I thought everyone around the table agreed to that. So, before I'm comfortable voting for this, I don't have that information, and I'm not comfortable approving this this evening.
In response to your question, we really do not, can you hear that better? We do, we really do not have a firm number of the number of participants that are going to opt-in because they are still wearing the options. They have received the information from the actuaries, and some people may be to the 11th hour, but without the approval of the ordinance, there's no way for them to even be able to decide whether they want to go in or not. That is the predication for them to be able to actually enter. They've received all of the information, but they will have 60 days to decide. And we've held a couple of informational meetings, and we've had a lot of participation in those meetings, but they have not concretely told us whether they're going to go into the program or not. But as Ms. King pointed out, participants will go in and at their, at their own expense, there'll be no cost to the city for their participation.
No, and I understand that, however, I mean, I thought we were already at our 60-day. If not, we're very, very close to our 60-day, and if they opt-in, I just think council should be aware, I mean, what, and I'm just, what if no one decides to opt-in? Why are we even making this change?
We are, we are making the change to correct what we deem as the appropriate action to take because these people never had the opportunity to go in before. So that is, we're fixing, I don't want to call it an error, an oversight that the ordinance requires that we have those forms, allowing people to say whether they want to be entered or not. So this is giving them that opportunity that they missed before. That was the whole basis for this action, is to give the people in this group an opportunity to enter into SERs.
So are you saying then the new 60 days is going to start all over?
It is, is actually going to start from the approval of the ordinance. And each of the individuals at our last meeting was notified that they will have the appropriate amount of time.
And we are, we are trying, we are going to enact an emergency ordinance this evening as well.
I don't know, I'd like to hear from my colleagues. That's not how I understood it when we were in our meeting, but that they were going to be given a letter, and then they had 60 days from that time, and then it was going to come back to council. So, that's how I understood it, through my notes.
From my understanding, they were going to have 60 days, which took us to the end of May. Unfortunately, from what I was told, is because each person's information was unique and different, it took the Gabriel Roder some time to put together each individual employee's number to them. And then once they had those numbers, they were able to have those meetings. While that was going on, we learned that the resolution that we approved had to be done as an ordinance amendment in order to make sure that it's appropriate and legal.
That is correct.
So they didn't even, even though we were told it could be done in 60 days, it took longer to get the actual numbers for each employee.
Well, I can just speak for myself. I think communication is key. I think it would have been nice if someone sent us something stating that. I don't, I personally don't appreciate coming to the meeting to hear this, and I'm disappointed. I'm really disappointed. Because someone knew about this earlier, it just takes a simple email or memo to notify all of council. Okay, perhaps there was a miscommunication. And if it was an error, mistake, that's fine, I can accept it. But you're bringing something to us now for an emergency, and I still have questions, I'm not sure if I understand. So, because of that, I probably will not be voting in favor of this until my questions are answered. Understood. And I'm not going to bring them all forward tonight.
Counsel, any other questions? I did have one question on paragraph C. In my notes, it said that employees electing entry into SERs will be offered Tier 2 benefits and/or the blended retirement plan.
Correct.
It just says that they will be placed in, that if they elect to participate, they will, they will be in the blended retirement plan.
Yeah. In the ordinance?
Yeah.
Those have, after March 13th, 2023, that elect to participate in the retirement system will be placed in a blended retirement plan. I think that, is that your question?
Oh, yeah, that is, that is correct, I'm sorry. Because it didn't talk about the Tier 2. I did not see that in, I did not see that in the ordinance. Unless I'm missing something.
I believe you read that from the ordinance, right?
What I read was the letter. It's not spelled out in the ordinance because it wasn't spelled out previously.
That's correct.
And I know, I'm believing, now I recall, the meeting on March 13th was a closed session. But that was the gist of what, well, I shouldn't say the gist, that's not the word I want to use, but that was the discussion as far as the letter, and then as far as what would happen, based on how it's handled before, and in the ordinance previous to that, it was always Tier 2, is my understanding.
And if those employees had gotten inadequately at the time that they were, at the time that they were supposed to be in, they would have been Tier 2 employees.
Oh, so it's moot point anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding is, in order, no matter what happens, this ordinance has to be amended.
Yes.
Period.
Yes, ma'am.
It has to be.
We cannot, that is the authority to allow SERs, for these members to enter into SERs. They will not act and allow these members in without the amendment to the order. That is their authority to allow members in.
Okay, so this has to happen. And then the information about who will take advantage of this or not is still being collected.
And quite honestly, as I stated before, we won't know until they decide. Some people are consulting with their tax attorneys and things like that, and still gathering information. There are people who are still on the fence.
Correct.
And we had a meeting as late as last week, and there are people who are still deciding. We had our GRS come in, as well as a member of the SERs team to connect with these members because they had some really good questions that they posed when we had our first informational meeting, that we were able to help to clarify some things, to present the ordinance that you received this evening.
And that's fine, what I'm, where I was going was that, when we do this emergency enactment, will they have the additional 60 days from today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because that will give them the additional time that they may need.
Yes, ma'am.
And once all that is completed, then you'll report back to this council?
Absolutely.
That those responses were? Okay, all right. I got it. I got it.
Following up on that, if we do this emergency enactment, and then Friday, someone says, "I want to sign up," are they then, do you wait and sign them all up at the end of 60 days, or are they signed up at that point?
No, they're, they're going to be signed up at the point that they're asking to get in. Each, everybody has their own individual circumstances.
Okay.
And it will be, there is a process that is in place from when it happened in 2007, so we have all of the appropriate notifications that need to go to the 401 plan, as well as the notifications that need to go to the bank and to SERs. So we're all ready to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve the ordinance, or accept and approve the ordinance amendment 1.314 of Chapter 9 of the Southfield City Code, Southfield Employee Retirement System, as presented with all the corrections as shown here.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve ordinance amendment 1.314 of Chapter 9 of the Southfield City Code, Southfield Employee Retirement System. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce an act emergency ordinance number 1771.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to introduce and enact emergency ordinance 1771. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries with one no vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council. I have one more item, city charter review and formation of a charter review committee. The letter that I prepared that's in your package, it references what happened, I believe it was in 1999. I know this has always come up for the last several years about reviewing our charter, because we always have charter amendments, or some section of the charter that may be outdated. And as you will see, there were three options that was presented to the council at that time in 1999, and the option that the council chose at that time was that each council person and the mayor designated a committee member, and eight members select a ninth member, no family members, no one running for public office, I believe they had to be a registered voter. And I wanted to share that with you, and then the other additional information, once those, that committee was formed, I believe there were several meetings, which, of course, the city attorney's office was with that group. The minutes state that they didn't necessarily have to make an open meeting, but they did. Mr. Barris did recommend that, and I think the last minutes ahead, so they had 16 minutes, and then they came back before the council with the recommendations. There was reports provided, and then I think there were 10 amendments. I'm not sure, you all may know a little bit better than I do, but I believe at the end there were 10 charter amendments recommended. And that is what I just want to present to you tonight, just to get the conversation started again, as far as if this body is interested in doing a charter review commission, and how you would like to form a, form that committee.
Okay. I know that, I think, for the last several years, I know I've been one of the many council members who have been trying to get a charter review committee, because we keep talking about different things in the, in the charter that we would like to see changed, and instead of doing one-offs, I think it deserves a complete review again. But I'd like to hear, I mean, Councilwoman Frazier was here when we did it the last time, and what are your thoughts on this?
Well, there were several recommendations made, and Jack Barris, who was our city attorney at the time, suggested that we don't overload the ballot with too many. So, we tried to spread them out over several elections, but there were still some recommendations that I don't think ever got on the, on the ballot. So, but times have changed, situations have changed, probably charter committee ought to be put together again to start all over again, and look at the ones that need to be back on the ballot to, and the way the charter committee was put together, each council member nominated a person for the, for the charter committee. And then, I think Steve Hirai was a council member, he was the link between the council and the committee, and Attorney Barris was on, he was, he met every time the committee met. So, and he brought back reports.
Okay. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I was also around during that time, and I remember it took approximately a year and a half for them to get through the charter from the beginning to the end. I believe they met monthly, and the attorney was present at every single meeting, the city clerk was present at every single meeting, there was a secretary, so everything was basically verbatim as to what transpired and why certain recommendations were made. I believe also the city administrator, if my memory is correct, was also. So it's very, I mean, very, very labor intense. I think it's something that. I think it's something that is needed, but I'm not sure when we start this project or start this. You know, if this is approved by council, when do we start it? And again, remember, it's probably going to take about a year and a half to go through the entire charter, put the proposals together. And the attorney did update council, I believe it was every month. At that time, we had committee of the whole meetings, you know, to let council know what was going on and if council had any questions or suggestions at that time. You know, they were related to the attorney, then back to the committee.
Okay. Councilwoman Hoag?
I, I would be, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I would be supportive of this committee. My question was going to be, when would it start and how long? But then, is this group, are they compensated?
No.
No, okay. That's all I want, but I am supportive of this, thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Ms. King, did you indicate that there's been ten things already that have been identified?
No, there were, that, those committees, well, that particular committee, the one that I was looking at, by, after that year, year and a half, they reported back with ten amendments. And then the committee brought it to council and then council reviewed and
Oh, okay.
I don't have all that information in front of me, but obviously it had to be discussed with the whole council, the charter committee, and then the city attorney.
Okay.
And then they decided how many they wanted to.
Okay, no, those are historical things. I, I thought when you mentioned there were ten things currently that have been identified, but that was historically?
No, from that committee ninety-nine through two thousand one, I believe, they came up with ten potential charter amendments.
Okay.
I can tell you next time which ones actually get on the ballot and pass, but
Okay.
Like Councilwoman Banks said, it was needing.
Okay, no, I just, I just thought there was something brewing that somebody gave you ten things they'd like to see changed currently. But anyway, either way, if, if and when this, this commission is put together, it should be as professional. And I would like to see a professional stenographer there taking notes. Similar to the planning commission, I would like to see that, that document produced because this, this will be a living document and something that we would be dealing with. And I would be fairly steadfast that we have a professional, you know, stenographer there taking minutes and, and those minutes being, I assume, shared with council at the appropriate time.
My understanding, what I read, is that there was a report, there was a report provided by the city attorney after a certain amount of time or after a certain number of meetings.
Okay, well.
So the council was updated regularly.
Okay, well, whatever, I'd like to just see a, a verbatim, like I get from the planning commission, the, the proceedings. And just, this will be a living document and I know that the things that come out of this commission will sort of dictate the city on a going forward basis twenty to thirty, forty years. And I want to make sure that, that what is there is, is nothing gets dropped because quite frankly, somehow minutes, things are dropped out of our everyday minutes. So just a professional stenographer there to just let me know, you know, what, what is being transpired.
I think we can work out those details later. The planning commission does not have a professional stenographer anymore. They only did that, at that time because they didn't have anyone to take minutes for them.
Well.
But all the recommendations will come back to city council because city council is the only one that can make a decision on what would get onto a ballot for the charter change as well.
Okay, I would want to see a professional note taking, a note taker there. If you call it stenographer or whatever you call her, whatever she's been called. But then, like I said, we can, we can deal with that once we get past this process.
So it sounds like there's a consensus on council to form a charter review committee?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just want you to know, you know, keep in mind that the legislative committee has been working on this already and would be glad to work again. I mean, we've asked Ms. King to do a lot already. But when we're, you know, we can make some recommendations for the whole council so that we don't have to start from scratch. Get the ball rolling if Mr. Frazier and Ms. Taylor are okay with that.
I was going to say, let's pick one now and bring it back at our next meeting.
Go ahead. Oh, well.
Save you some time. If that's, I don't want to stop my toes.
I was just volunteering our.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I couldn't hear, what did you say, pick what now?
I would say if we, if we just picked one of the options now, we can come, you know, come back at our next meeting with unofficial action from the city attorney to start the ball rolling now. If that's.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I would just say is, I mean, there's nothing wrong with getting the ball rolling, but do we want to do it the exact same way we did fifteen years ago or do we want to?
You mean twenty-four years ago?
Or twenty-four years ago?
I, I thought that option one was a good option.
Did you have another option you were proposing?
I'm just going to say I'm not extremely comfortable with each council member picking, handpicking somebody. I think there should be some kind of application process or something like boards and commissions where people are going to fill out application, maybe a resume or maybe not a resume, but just something about themselves, show us what type of work they've done in the city. Give us a better idea of who they are instead of just one person picking their own favorite. But again, that comes to a vote as well, so, you know, if that's, if that's okay with everybody else, then I'm fine.
Councilwoman Banks?
And maybe another thought is that whatever name each elected official presents, there is an application process and a resume that's attached so council can see who this person is. But I don't know if I see a problem with it going before the legislative committee to just fine tune not only the process of selecting, but maybe making a recommendation on how they're going to tackle this. Or I don't, I don't know. Just a suggestion.
Wouldn't they be taking it section by section?
Well, some of the sections are long, I mean, some of the sections are long.
That's why I took them a year and a year and a half last time. I mean, I'm, I'm open to any, any suggestions. Do we want it to go back to legislative? Do we want to?
When you say go back to legislative, to do what?
To iron out some of these details or just have a full council discussion.
I'd like a full council discussion.
That could follow after legislative.
I agree. Whatever legislative they should, condense this down to, to something manageable and bring it back to council for, to, to work it out, see, well, now this is what we want to do. But because I think if we, we get, we get the whole ball of wax between seven people, we'd be here a long time. And we just get to three individuals, narrow this down to something that we can then deal with. It will be more manageable and it will move quicker. And, and whatever you bring is not gospel. It can, it can be ripped apart if it's not put together appropriately or if it's, you know, if it needs, needs more work.
When's your next meeting?
June.
Okay.
So what?
June twenty-fourth?
Twenty-eighth, I think.
That's the fourth, that's the fourth.
The fourth Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So would you have something to bring back by June twenty-sixth? July tenth?
I believe it's.
It shouldn't take.
Awesome. I mean, we can, we can set a meeting, a meeting up in June earlier than the fourth, I believe.
I just know that, you know, in the summer, things get slower and
Well.
Trying to, I'm just trying to move this. We've been talking about it for so long, so many years, I'm just trying to get, get it moving quicker, that's all.
But I think the, the criticality of this, take whatever time is needed. We've been talking about it for a year, but we want to get it off to a good start and give it enough time to, to be dealt into, to be talked about, to be discussed. So whatever time it takes, the ball is rolling. The ball is rolling and it's rolling to a conclusion. And we want to make sure that while it's rolling, the conclusion is, we, we take the appropriate amount of time to have a good, a good conclusion. So whatever time you get, you, you guys want to come back and give us one of these three, right? Your recommendation for one of these three concepts and everything else.
Well, no, he's not even saying it may be a different concept, a fourth or fifth concept.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's why I give you time to, to come up with what you think is the best idea. If it takes you, don't rush it. I mean, there's no sense in rushing it because this will be a living document for the next, you know, twenty to thirty years. So just take your time with it.
Councilwoman Frazier?
Yeah. I'm getting a little confused about what we want to do because, first of all, I want to ask Councilwoman Brightwell, how detailed are you suggesting that the minutes be?
The spoken word, the detail of the spoken word, whatever the spoken words are, that's what I want to see.
You were, you were referring to the planning commission minutes when they had the court recorder, a reporter there? Where John said he wanted to go to the bathroom and, you know.
No, no, whatever, not, not, not no far-flung, I don't want to use a simple word here. Nothing far-flung, but whatever professional minute taken is and professional stuff that will stand up in court, a court stenographer, those, those things, they, they get you sent to prison if you, if you, if you do to go to prison. I just want something that's professionally done by a professional that indicates to me these, these are the facts of this particular proceedings. And those proceedings will be the history of how Southfield came to this conclusion about this new charter. That's, that's all it is, that's all I'm talking about. I, I don't want, quite, you know, we, we're all council people, we've seen minutes. I read, I read minutes that, you know.
Well, one of the things that you have to keep in mind is there's a professional person in that, in every meeting who is our city attorney that knows what needs to be recorded. And a lot of fluff to come back with a bailout of, a paper for everybody to read is not going to be very productive as far as I'm concerned. We went through the whole, the committee, went through the charter. And I don't know anybody in this room that's been in court because it's got challenged what the final report was. The minutes were taken. Councilwoman Banks said, "I was not in any of the meetings." Councilwoman Banks said that there was, I don't know, you took the minutes or if one of your employees took the minutes of the thing. But it came back and it wasn't that complicated. There's a final report, there should be a final report, that if everybody wants to see what the final report was, it was about six pages long. It showed all of the things that they talked about and which ones were going to, were dead letters that didn't need to be changed because the state superseded what was in our, our charter. And there were a dozen maybe things that needed to be changed that we were going to put on the ballots a little at a time. I think we're trying to overcook this hunk of meat.
Well, it's, it's, when something is important, I kind of err to all the, be overcautious when something is, is important.
It's not even more important today than it was back when we did it before, it's the same charter.
I just said, I, I come out of a different bag and I prefer to have professional stuff. I read some of these minutes. I read minutes religiously since I've been on council. And some of this stuff, I don't want to denigrate anybody. But if we're going to, this is a suggestion. If we're going to rely on a document that is being presented, I want it to be professionally done and to be as accurately as humanly possible. And I've dealt with some big decisions. I prefer to err on the side of caution when it requires my, my input. You know, if, if the data is correct and I put my, my vote on something and that data, I had to, I had to be assured this is input. That's just my suggestion. If you guys prefer to have whatever you got, utilize your decision, go with it. I'm only one vote. That, that's my suggestion.
They are not rewriting the charter. They're going through the charter and finding things that are no longer pertinent for the way that the charter was written. And those things came back in a, in a format that could be put on a ballot so that the public could vote on it.
Well, I, I thought we, maybe I'm wrong. You guys are going to look at the charter and we, we're going to go, the commission will go through the charter and just do what needs to be there and what needs to be added and what needs to be taken out. So that'd be a whole revamping of, let's just redoing the charter. If there's something there that needs to be there, it'll state something that needs to be there, it'll be input. If something needs to come out, it'll come out. That's why I go through the process if you're not going to do a whole scale or rewashing of the whole thing. So if there's no need to have accurate data, there's no need to have accurate data. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling the way I operate. If I'm going to vote on something or if I'm responsible for something, I want it to be as accurately as possible.
I never said that we shouldn't have accurate data. I said we don't need a bailout paper to prove that everybody was at the meeting and everybody, what everybody said. I think a synopsis of what was said. And it came back in a format that this paragraph needs to be changed because we don't, we don't need hitching posts out in front of the, the city hall anymore. So let's take this out of the, out of the charter.
It's, it's just a function of the data that is being given to council that will be regenerated to the public to vote on at some point in time. If they, if we're going to have an accurate document, that's fine. If it's, if it's not, if it's not necessary, if it's necessary to have a professional, not necessary, we just won't have it. That's, that's all it is.
If, if I may, we follow Robert's rules of order. We will have our notes taken in that order. We do not have to say every single word because it is a study. It's a review, it's a committee. The outcome, what we put out, the, the verbiage that will go on the ballot will be specific.
Right.
That's what will be specific.
Robert's rules of order said in minutes are there what was done. And, and I know that for a fact.
So it's not verbatim words, so. But, but we don't have to, we don't have to decide that tonight. If you don't mind, we can just refer this to legislative or we can say.
That's what, that's what it is.
Okay.
You guys do your thing, but deal with it when you come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hoag?
That's what I was going to say.
Alright, so legislative will discuss this and bring it back at our, hopefully our last meeting in June.
Okay. No later. Okay.
If not, I'm making an executive decision. Alright, any other questions on the charter review committee?
What I'd like to say, if anybody have any ideas, could they please forward them to the legislative committee, which is Lloyd Cruz, Myron Frazier and myself? That way we don't have to spend more time discussing it. You will give us your ideas. Say things like you want a Southfield resident.
Say things like, you want a Southfield resident, you want us to create a new process form, we may not want to use what's currently there, something like that. Or if there's other things you would like to see, you know, in, you know, us to consider. Just send us that now, so that once we meet, we can have all that and come back to you with something that you can use. Please, and Mary, whatever you want to, if you could send that to us, as far as our legal, our administration, our clerk, because you've experienced this before, you've seen other cities and states do different charter amendments, whatever you could help us to formulate a concise document, something we can work with, and what your thoughts are. If you feel it has to be a Southfield resident, it has, they have to have certain things that you would like to see, please forward all that kind of stuff to us so we can take a look at it.
Okay.
And you guys are going to give us recommendations, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One more now?
Like every committee does. All right.
So what?
Thank you. Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
I have nothing for this evening, thank you.
All right, I do have an announcement from our city treasurer, that delinquent water bills from two thousand and twenty-two are due by this Friday, May twenty-sixth. You can pay online, by phone, mail, Dropbox, or the treasurer's office, otherwise they will be placed on your taxes as a lien. If you have any questions, you can contact the Water Department at two four eight seven nine six four eight five zero with any questions. We have no one else, we have nothing to schedule. Is there anything else to come before this council? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.